Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I call the June 11, 2025, meeting of the Kansas State Board of Education to order. Welcome to those in attendance and listening online. We are in day two. All of our board members are present and seated at the board table. The agenda was approved yesterday, which included today's items, unless there's any changes. And the one change we're going to have this morning, instead of starting with the commissioner, I'm going to, in effect, call violation on myself for yesterday. We had a little bit of a fund in the emergency substitute license vote. So I'm going to recount what we did, and then we're going to clean it up a little bit, because it didn't really procedurally go as it should have. Melanie moved that we had do the temporary, which was a two-year, for the modified emergency substitute license. Betty seconded that motion. In that discussion, Mr. Porter brought forth what he wanted to amend or replace the motion. But we should have voted for the action of replacement and then voted on the actual motion of what that action is. So tell me how we need to fully clean this up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just called your attention, and I think it seemed to make sense at the time, but, you know, things were moving pretty quickly.
Right.
And it seemed to, you seemed to have consensus. So, you know, as I explained to you, that sometimes I try to, you know, I look at, look at the situation and decide whether or not it needs to be interrupted at that very moment or addressed. It seemed that you had consensus and you were, you know, quickly moving along, but, and it can happen very quickly.
Yes, it does.
And so there's a lot going on sometimes. But if you, if we reflect just on how that procedurally happened, I guess to dissect it, I would say that when you may have a motion, whether it's to amend or substitute, when you're changing the motion that's been first and seconded, you're voting then on that change, whether or not that change can, can occur.
Right.
So, because that change might fail, and then you would go back to your first, your previous motion. So you're going to vote on the change, and then you need to vote on the motion as changed.
Okay.
So there would be two, two steps in that process.
Two steps.
And have they already voted on the change?
Well, it wasn't clear, I think is the problem. So I think clearly we want to vote on making a change to the initial motion. So the initial motion was for the two-year temporary extension of the modified emergency substitute license. So what Jim brought forward was changing that to a permanent. So we want to vote on, are we okay with the change of the motion?
Probably the best way to handle it right now, just so that it's fresh, we're talking about it, is go ahead and read the motion that was made, first and seconded, then, and that vote would, would.
Oh, the first one?
This would, just for, so the record is clear in the context of anybody watching right now.
Okay.
And then make the second motion, and you're making it, you're voting on whether the substitute would occur. And then we will add a third step, which would be to.
The actual action.
To actual amendment. Does that make sense?
Okay. So Mrs. Haas moved that the Kansas State Board of Education temporarily approve the modified emergency substitute license through June 30, 2027. Mrs. Arnold seconded that motion, and then discussion happened. In that discussion, a replacement or amend, amended motion occurred.
And then.
And was seconded.
And read that.
So Mr. Porter made an amendment to replace the word temporarily to permanently approve the modified emergency substitute license. Mr. Hirschberger seconded that motion.
And I believe that now, fresh, you should ask for a vote on that.
Okay, so.
On the amendment.
On making the amended motions.
Correct.
Great, okay. So all in favor of amending the motion?
Is everybody clear on that?
That's, that's a fair, that's a fair question.
That is a fair question.
If you're not clear, then, you know, this would be a time to raise that.
We're voting to amend.
We're voting to amend.
Yes.
Okay.
I changed.
Okay, so we are a nine-zero. Are you opposed, or?
Um, yeah.
Okay, so we have nine in favor, one opposed, for changing the motion. Now, the new motion on the table is making the.
Permanent.
Making the modified emergency substitute license permanent.
Does everyone understand that?
They're voting on.
Okay, so. Do we need, okay.
So you're going to present that.
But don't we need, okay, so that is the, but do we need somebody to actually bring forward that motion?
It hasn't been approved by the previous vote.
Okay. To amend the motion.
By nine of one.
Okay, okay. So now we're going to actually vote, do we want the permanent license? Okay.
Say that again.
We are voting on actually making the modified emergency substitute license permanent. Okay, all in favor. And that is a ten-zero vote. Thank you, board. Wasn't that fun? We're all learning something here. It doesn't happen a lot, so it gets a little bit interesting. Okay. Thank you for waiting, sir, while we clean up our mess. Right, I know. But we do want to be procedural.
So I just, I just went back to tell Shane, eight minutes, I'm blaming him. It was his deal. And he's going to be with.
Green chaos.
Okay.
Good morning.
Thank you, Commissioner, good morning.
So for the last, since January, January, February, March, April, and May, on Mondays, and sometimes on Wednesday afternoons, you've been in retreats, thinking about what do you want to set as board goals, which is in policy that every two years, when there's a new change of officers in board, because there's board elections, every two years, you will develop goals. I, I'm reminded of this, too, because I think it's instructive of how we even approach things. Yesterday, all of you signed certificates that are going to teachers who are doing the standard setting process this week. I know I'm going to go over there later today after we adjourn and express my thanks to them, because they're working eight o'clock to five o'clock all week to bring you some recommendations next month. But we always set forth processes by which we try to get as much voice and as much input before decisions are made. You know, I think, if you think about where the mission statement came out, or the vision statement, previous boards spent months and months and months developing that. You've just spent months talking about, hey, these are kind of the priorities. I've tried to assemble those today for you, and give you, I'll be giving you a draft of what those looks like. But this is literally four months in the process, and it won't be done today, probably maybe next month, or maybe August, depending on how much revision you want. And then I'll talk about how we'll proceed after that, and how we'll measure those through December of 2026. As you know, in November 2026, there will be another election, and in January of 2027, there will be new people, people possibly seated at the board, unless everyone who's up for election is, is, is elected again. So the work we're doing is to support the mission and the vision of the board, how we work with students. So I'm going to share with you, since Ben gave his final presentation, in honor of Ben Proctor, I will share with you some work that he shows every time he gets up. You know, I'm often said, or in fact, G A Bowie mentioned this last night, Randy always has the map. You know, whenever he, you know, if you go with me, and I'm, I'm presenting anywhere, I always use the map. And before that, I'll say, Dennis has seen this, can you, how many of the state board members can you name? And usually, at least one of you are sitting in the audience, and they can't name you. So in honor of Ben, he often talks about, here's the problem, it's not the absence of goals. It's a presence of too many. So this is a quote from Mike, Michael Follin. I like the work, the original Stephen Covey. I say that because his son now runs the company, Stephen Covey. But the original, you know, basically said, it's not the app, I mean, he said it, too. It's where are our priorities, and where do we want to spend our time? So if we, unconnected, never, ever-changing, resulting in overload and fragmentation. And Ben's shared with you even quotes about schools, oh, we're doing this, and this, and that, and Biden, oh, this, this next year, we're going to go on this. And what are you really doing? What are you focusing on? The overload results in too many initiatives. The sheer volume makes it impossible for people to manage whatever organization you're doing in a way that gives depth to the work. People see little or no connection to each other on their daily work. They scramble to implement too many directions of lack in a coherent sense of how they connect the results. This is Michael Follin's book on coherence. So as you know, then, our KISA process is based on this theory of action out of Follin. If we strengthen coherence across Kansas with a few high-leverage actions, then our students will develop more knowledge and skills. Let me, let me give it to you in a different way that I like to think about it. The more simple you make your work, the more complex schools can become. The more complex you make all the rules and regulations, the more simple they become. Does that make sense? If you give complex and rules, and then they just check, I'm doing that. If you say, we want you to be really good in structured literacy as an example, that gives them a lot of autonomy within that structure. So I always think, you want to be simple, very tight, allow them to be very deep, and, but the more you make it, the harder it is. So that's, that's nothing new, and that's in honor of Dr. Proctor, because he's shared that with you many times. If you go to KISA, that's there every single time they talk, that Jay or Myron or, or Ben talk. And this is the KISA model. This is nothing new, you've seen it. But because of that, you know, the last time we met at the retreat, we said, can we somewhat take this work, and then model board goals out of it, so that we also talk about what are the goals, and then what are the things that lead up to that? So Ben, you know, posed this question to you at the last retreat, can KISA 2.0 be a model to situate the state board priorities and goals? And certainly, the board officers said, yeah, why don't you kind of play with that? So the model you're going to see today is me playing with the KISA model, but moving your goals and your priorities into them, based about, of the mountain of discussions you've had over the last four or five months. So, again, the right leverage. If we talk about the role of standards in assessment, how students gain knowledge and skills, how can we best support that effort? Support teachers and leaders. You, many of you got to go eat a big steak. I asked, I asked Shane, when he gets up here, ask if he worked out at 4:30 this morning. He said, yes. I don't know how he did that, because he ate that 20-ounce steak last night, like I did. And, and I couldn't hardly get out of bed, because I, maybe that's age, right? You eat that, that heavy. But you saw new leaders. And if you noticed, if you noticed, not, not 100%, because I sat next to one that, that was a, was a Kansas Teacher of the Year for a lot. She was an elementary principal, she is an assistant superintendent, now she's becoming her first superintendency. But if you noticed, many of those with you last night were very young, and very inexperienced, and they need help. They just need support in a different way than if they were in their mid-40s, before they ever got to that first executive job. How can we support our good teachers in the field that are in transition, or in a registered apprenticeship program, or came to us through a TAP program? They didn't spend four years in college. They were Liz Anst, Anstein, you know, the Teacher of the Year, right? That was in business, and she's transitioning, and she's got to figure out, I know the business world, but I got to figure out how to teach this. So how do we do that? So I'm going to show you a draft, and I have it here, because this will be small on the screen. And I ran a little experiment in our executive leadership, Connie, this week. I showed something on the screen, and I showed that people were squinting. So I just asked everyone that had glasses on, can you see this without your glasses? And they went, no. Right, Shane? We were, we were shocked, no. So you're going to see this even with your glasses, so you're going to go, I can't see that, it's just too small. So I will pass it out, but I told Kathy, as a good teacher, you don't get it before I go over it with you. Otherwise, you'll be looking at things, and I'm talking about something else. Okay? Because that's what human nature does, right? That's what human nature does. So I learned this, I learned this when I was a teacher, and, and you have a film strip projector that had a beep, and you could have, then you would advance it one at a time, right? So you didn't get to see the full thing. So you're going to see that this looks very much like the KISA model that you adopted, just in the structure. But instead of fundamentals, we're going to have state board goals. That's going to be on the left. Instead, structures, we're going to have methods by which we do that. And then we're going to have lead indicators. And by the way, eventually, if you like this, I'm going to ask our research division to work with you on developing the measures by which you will hold all of ourselves accountable. Okay? Just like we're holding a school improvement plan accountable. So you'll model exactly the same type of process that you're asking every school district in the state to model. That's, that's our, that's our theory. So first goal, you'll support and emphasize the four fundamentals of school improvement in the KISA process. That, all right, all the standard setting. And again, I'll give this to you in a handout. So we'll support the KISA process. Quality leadership. You will continue to spend time and effort on how do we bring quality teachers in the classroom and help them? Quality principals, quality superintendents. That, I, I would, I would argue, and many of you said this in our retreat, the challenge in 2025 that Jim and I never faced as superintendent is the shortage of qualified people and the, and the ascendancy to those positions in, in a fast period of time. I never advertised for an elementary teacher in McPherson. I never advertised for a social studies teacher or P E. I had 100 applicants on file all the time. In McPherson, Kansas today, that is not true. If I was superintendent in the seat today, that's not true. If, if Shiloh has a third-grade teacher open right now, my guess is he has zero to three applicants. I didn't live that world, but that's the new challenge. So therefore, we don't, you know, Shane will talk to you about registered apprenticeship, and he'll give you all the data today. I'm just saying, we have to respond differently to that. And so that's, we have to be about quality development. Quality science, technology, engineering, math, we call that STEM, and nutrition. Kelly, when she's with you today, will talk about nutrition is very much STEM, and when we put it in the classroom. It's, 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 so that work, because many of you talked about our Kansas Math Project, which you'll hear about in next month. Quality individual plans to study. All right? I heard from many of you, it is not Zello. Right? Right, Melanie? I just wanted you to know that, in case you don't know, Melanie's beat me on the head for about three or four years about that. It's not quality. And, and, and yet, you've had people in front of you, like Kansas City Piper, in the past couple of years, give you, look what we do, or you've been, I think maybe some of you even went to their senior project day, Niemhaus Central does something very similar, and you went, wow, oh, why isn't, why aren't we all doing that? Well, that's because we gave maybe some too many directives on that. Policy, regulation, and alignment. Can we simplify those? Can we get rid of some of those? Can we align some of those so that they can do the work? And are we requiring things that don't matter? It's a question, right? Because, you know, the legislature does this, too. This is not a, this is not a conspiracy. You add things, we add things every year. What do we ever get, get away from? Schools do it, too. I'm saying, maybe, I heard from you all, let's simplify. So those would be five goals. All right? And then what would we do? Well, a board planning meeting would start with the five goals. What do we need every meeting to be bringing in front of you around those five goals? For example, do we want to talk about AI technology? That would be part of your STEM discussion, right? And we would tie those to one of the board goals. Commissioners report when I'd, in front of you, you know, what's going on in the field? I can give that to you. When staff gets up and talks, again, not on, you know, not that every item on your agenda, or the majority of items, you know, the direction you want to go. Friday notes, I send that to you. Again, maybe highlights, or research articles, or things going on in other states that I may point out to you. Educator engagement, when you're out, when you're invited to schools, and you're talking to schools, or you're with them at a conference, and you're having, or last night, many of you were having conversations with people, are you asking, hey, how's this working for you? Give us some feedback. And the same thing when you engage in the community. I know many of you are asked to speak at a Kiwanis Club, or you go to a school board meeting, maybe, or, so those would be the methods and the lead indicators, and our measures of progress, if you like this, would then be what I'd bring our research team on to develop your school improvement plan. Stop, to stop you from squinting, I'm now passing out to you that, so you can look at. Yeah. Debbie, could you see it with the glasses on?
Without it?
No, 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 with. Because you have the glasses on. Not going to challenge you without the glasses. Yeah. I, I'm unusual, by the way. In third grade, I was told I needed glasses, and I wore glasses for a few years, and my, my eyesight actually corrected, it was for distance. And I can see that. But anyone that's over the age of 40 know the, the evening that you plopped in a chair or in the bed, and you went. Right? Remember that? And what is going on in my eyesight? So this is the same thing you're seeing on the screen. You can see it's draft. What I, again, what I've tried to do is take, you know, I gave you all the thing, every, every, every item that you discussed, we collected. Right? I had Peyton synthesize that. So every, but we didn't put every item on there. We're trying to say, where's the priority going to be with that? So I will stop, Madam Chair, and I will be happy to answer any questions, knowing this is your first time seeing this. And we're only going to adopt these when you're ready, whatever the, the, it is. If that's July, great. If it's August, great. And it won't be until after that time that I start bringing Haley and our research team and say, okay, now we're going to start working on the, the plan and the measurement, so that we know every quarter, are we, are we meeting our goals, or are we having, are we doing work that primarily is outside of these goals? And we'd have to ask ourselves, is that the best use of our time? We want to make your time where you want to put your priorities. Again, it's not 100%. If you go back to Covey's work, he always talks about the urgent, right? You always do things that are urgent that maybe are not important, because they just are urgent. But you want to spend time on what's important, and the more time you can plan to spend time on what's important, the more fulfilled you become as a human, and the more better we become as an organization. All right.
Okay. Betty has comments, questions?
She was frowning already. I told you, she did not like the second day of the board meeting.
Okay. Here we go. Ready? Now, the thing that concerns me, and this really looks good, I'll compliment you on that, for starters.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that, before we get into the critical analysis.
Yes.
I know.
And, and, and that's fine, but you started out with, we need to have a reasonable number of goals. And so looking at this, my concern is the first two, from a, a board perspective, and just looking at how we could engage in that. I'm almost wondering if it would not be more reasonable for us to have a smaller number? If you look at one and two, maybe, or giving, giving them a less prominent position in terms of what we would be looking at and what we would be discussing? That's a very quality school improvement, quality leadership development. Just, I'm not sure how, at the board table, we could build on that. So if you could perhaps give me a little more, little bit of an idea, because when we looked at the remaining three, I really could see the board interaction, the board guidance from that perspective. So I just wondered, when you talk about doing things well, we've been on such a fast pace of looking at the massive amount of things that we need to tackle. And I believe that it suggested if you have maybe two to three goals for that year, that you could do that better. So I was trying to prioritize, prioritize, which we could take away, and maybe really focus to put the meat on the bones of the remaining. And I'd be happy to hear your thoughts on that.
Sure. So I'll answer that in a couple of ways. I agree with you. Three would be ideal. And in fact, most of the research says you cannot have more than five. So I was never going to go more than five. I would have, I was trying to get all of your comments into three, couldn't get it. Because number one, if you don't have number one, you take out structured literacy. Because that's number one on the KISA process. And I wanted, you all talked about reading, and that needed to be in there. And so that process, because you adopted, Betty, I thought, you know. if I take, only put structured literacy, it takes out the other components of that. So I thought, well, you've already adopted that. Let's keep that in there. That, that was the thought. On the leader, on the leadership, if we don't engage Shane on what does licensure look like? What does mentoring look like? You know, we talked yesterday about the funding of mentoring and professional development. I want you just to think about this, because you're going to talk about this later. State of Kansas cut all the money for mentoring and professional development. We're staring down the federal government taking away the money that you already allocated to go for professional development. When people need additional training in any profession, you can't cut that training and think you're going to get a better outcome. So I'll use letters as an example, Betty. If we can't train teachers on how to teach structured literacy, how do they deliver that? Well, we just cut, we just cut all that work. I mean, so part of that leadership development was bringing that of how universities prepare people, how we partner with, you know, other organizations to make sure that they're, you know, doing work related to that. So those were the reason for those two in particular. But I agree with you. Ideally, less than five would have been my ideal also.
And I just kind of wondered, I mean, while we talk about quality school improvement, if you look at the prominence of items that we would have to discuss or would require board action, one and two perhaps would maybe take a less prominent since we're already geared to working on that. Now, if we look at the individual plan of study, and that's been a concern for the, the...
I was just thinking you're going to tell me I need to make a video, so...
I told you that, and you didn't listen to me. So perhaps Kathy could have a little more influence on that. But if you look at the IPS as an example, I really feel like that does require a lot more board direction, a lot more board input, because that is not being utilized with fidelity across the state. And as you, as you said, we do have some districts that are common, and they've done amazing things with that. But we do have some that it's, let's, let's let them take this test. When you guys finish, they have no clue. When I've gone out for and engaged students and I ask them about that, they look at me like, what? You know, do you understand it's supposed to tell you this? No, we're just given that test. And it's, at the end of the day, it's before lunch. And I don't really pay any attention. I've had a lot of students say, they just, just answer. They don't give it any thought because the relevance has not really been given to them that this is your future that we're talking about. So yes, I see that as a really huge priority. The prominence with the first two, while it's there, I, I don't see that as requiring as, as much work to try and develop. So I'm just saying, if we had, and, and you still may leave them there. Maybe it's just the arranging. We'll get, we'll talk about this as needed. But to have three solid goals that's really going to require the board to really work on and, and look at, I think would be good. If you want to leave it at five, that's fine. But that was just my thought. Thank you.
I have so much I want to say right now, but I'm going to be mindful and lean over to Melanie here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I have so much that I want to say too. And I'm looking at the clock and I'm checking the agenda item. And we have 10 minutes left on this, folks, and we're just getting started. So I will be quick. I've done a lot of goal setting because I've led a lot of teams. And I've had a lot of people that worked for me. And so whether we're doing individual performance goal setting or goal setting for the team or for the company, launching a new product, whatever, I think goal setting matters a lot. And one of the things that I like to talk with teams about is why? Why did you choose this goal? And what do you hope to get out of this goal? Like, really, why are we doing this? I show up here for students. That is why I show up, because I want them to have a better school experience. Because I want them to be successful after high school. And I want them to be part of that process and path. Not to be told by mom or dad or whomever, this is where you're headed and what you're going to do. And that's why I'm so passionate about IPS. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again. We are failing students when we don't give them the supports, the people who need to sit down with them and kind of walk them through the process, especially as they reach high school, especially as they're figuring out, what are my skills? And separately, what do I really enjoy doing? And how do I marry those two together so that I can build a career and have a life? So I would love for this to be a retreat item where we could really unpack it. I feel like the first one and the last one can maybe be part of the same, to Betty's point about having fewer. But I'd, I'd really like to see us focus on that why. In the spirit of KISA, I would love for us to work on a rubric that goes with this that we see on the screen right now and just really wrap some smart goals around this. So that when we say this is a goal, we're also going to truly hold ourselves to account those measures of progress in the last column. We need to have that rubric so that we can truly go back and measure and have those, those stakeholders telling us how we're doing. We can be assessing ourselves. I think this is a great start. I would just love to see us really sit down and flesh this out. And I think a retreat might be a good way to do that. But I would beg of the board that everyone shows up and comes and stays for that retreat. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I am going to step in. Sorry, Debbie, but I want to remind us, and I know I eat this a little more than some, but with the KISA, how this is set up is you have the fundamentals, and then you build the action plan. You pick a fundamental. And then for, however, I mean, and we can gauge the length of time. We can, and then you build the, how are we going to walk it out, right? So, and I also want to say, these are not in priority order. There's just, they're just there. That's what they are.
The draft may not be big enough.
I do love that four of them start with Q. Too bad we couldn't have got that on the last one. Maybe you should put quality policy. I mean, I think we might need to...
This just came from executive leadership. Said, you need to tell what your measurement's going to be. And so that's where...
But it's real, like, we, because we can build our own action plans out of this that we do want to measure so that we are prioritizing different points of time. You know, like, we can, and we can, we can be flexible and fluid in that, in the process too. And you had talked to me, said something to me once about a retreat on IPS. So I appreciate that. I think that's real. We, to take those moments and take more time and really step into some of those conversations. Debbie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so I think that my mind organizes this a little bit differently in, for me. Because what I ran on was empowering parents. And I quickly learned that the only way we were going to empower parents and their children's education to get that best educational experience for families is to empower their local school boards. And so then I would go back to what I had brought up in the retreat in the statute 72-1138 in the case annotations. So Marco will want to know this. But, and you had said you were going to bring it up with Mark at some point. But that, in the case annotations, it does clarify that local boards supervise the schools. And then it, on the third citation for state Ex Rel, which I don't know even that means, versus Board of Education 212, it basically says, "State Board of Education possesses general supervisory powers over district boards." So I would, if it was in my purview, to set goals is I would have more of a focus on our relationship with the local boards and getting their feedback of what they specifically need us to address for their sakes and make that one of the goals. I would also focus more on teacher licensure and the continuing education that's involved in teacher licensure. And beyond that, I would probably think that maybe it would be good to have two sets of goals. One set of goals for this state Board of Education and then another set of goals for the Department of Education. Because you have a lot more relationship and influence with the superintendents and just the nuts and bolts of running a school and all that expertise and understanding that's necessary. That isn't necessarily necessary to this board because this board is really dealing more with the expectations of the families who sent us here to get their kids a good education. And so through maybe teacher licensure, and I know Dr. Carter and I've talked about this before, Mr. Carter, sorry. I've talked about this before, is, you know, you, and it's common in practices and to have continuing education. And you can have de-escalation training, how to effectively organize or run a classroom, managing paperwork, data, et cetera. These are things that we could have conversations on as far as expectations of what should be involved in continuing education, just to set a certain standard of education for our teachers. And then beyond that, leave it to those local boards to really manage their own curriculums and their own teacher training beyond that.
That latter part, wouldn't that come in policy, regulation, and alignment? Debbie, I mean, those are, those, those, those requirements are set in, in regulation now. And so it would be a review of all of that to see, what do you want to keep? What do you want to strengthen? What do you want to take out?
Or what we want you to do through the department versus what we want to do from this board? Is it possible to split those out in policy? So... Well, I, I understand we set basically over, overreaching kind of standards, if you will. And the Department of Education does run fairly independently of us because we meet two days out of the month and they're here, you know, all the time. So I, I just think that there's a separation of duties there in my mind.
Well, no, no, there is. That's true of any board. I mean, whether it's corporate or school board or state school board.
And I would even throw in finances because I know, I have local board members that would love if we had something that they know is standardized so that they know... Because that's a lot for them to take on, a lot of fiscal responsibility that if we gave them some direction and some parameters, I think they would feel a lot more safe and secure that they're managing their funds at the local level in a way that's state-approved. And it, it just, there's a lot that we could do to support them without controlling how they spend their money. You know, just help them know how to manage it. Danny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I keep saying simplify, but I don't, I personally don't see this simplifying. All due respect to Melanie, I've said this all along. IPS, I totally, totally disagree with that. Because I don't, I don't think kids, they may want to go to a certain direction, but then they may want to change that fast. And I, my experience in the field and the 88 buildings that I've been in, sometimes the locals push the, keep pushing these kids. Once they get them on an IPS, they keep pushing them in that direction. And I, that concerns me a, a lot. And so I'm, I feel like we're not simplifying anything. And just like post-secondary success, our job is to do the best thing we can do from, I guess, pre-K to 12 academically, not social-emotional learning, not all of this stuff, extra stuff. And it seems like we focus on all this extra stuff and we have billions of dollars for the extra stuff. And my, and, and...
And Danny, that's not in here.
Huh?
That's why that's not in here.
I, it is, it is, it is in there, but that, that's, that's another conversation also. And, and I, I... The quality leadership development and, and professional development, those things are, are very good. Because that is money always well-spent. Because in business, once you hire somebody, there's, there's a, just bringing them up to speed to your particular building or business is, there's a cost for that. And, and having evaluations of those teachers, let's say in this case, and developing them professionally better, the cost is a lot cheaper than just getting rid of them. So there's, I believe, like, again, simplifying things that it, it makes things more money to be able to do those types of things. And I have a lot more...
Betty? One final comment. Now, do you understand why that commercial is needed by you?
I don't know. I, I know I enjoyed the time with Asia. So that I know.
I just want to say, board, this is our opportunity to churn it out some. So I know it's, you're taking it in as well, and we'll do some more. And obviously, please feel free to reach out to me, Commissioner, in between so that we can keep moving. But we want to keep, keep talking.
And part of this is trying to figure out collectively what I was hearing, right? Because I, we, we allowed four months of you to tell what was important to you. I tried to simulate that. But if, if there were five or six of you saying something, I tried to put that in still limit. And I'm not saying it works. That's why I brought it to you, with a big draft on it. So you, well, I mean, this is the beginning of this, right? We want to make it something that, that's worthwhile for you. And just know that, and you know this, when you sat on the board, you never want to give away your voice. But at the end of the day, at least six of you are going to need to vote. And we'd hope that it's closer to nine or 10 because you want this to be representative of all of you. My job is to try to thread that and see if we can bring that together. And hopefully, we can for you, before we get to 2026. And we're thinking about doing it again. So, you know, I mean, we want you to focus on what you want to focus on. But yeah, that, that, all of you have different ideas, and that's great. You want to bring different ideas. Makes us stronger.
Yes. Debbie, did you have...
Yeah, I just wanted to summarize basically what I said. I, because I had a question in my mind. I said, how is it that we have a constitutional requirement to have general supervision over the local school boards, but we do not even have them mentioned in our goals? I think is very important that we mention them in our goals, our relationship we want to develop with them and the goals that we have in regard to our local school boards. That's very important to me. We'll have to investigate that. Okay. Well, for now, I guess we will all keep digesting and come back.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your work. Did your computer die, Jim? Okay. Up next, we're going to have Shane Carter, teacher licensure, talk to us about the Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Program, otherwise known as the RTAP.
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, the board, Commissioner Watson, thank you for being here. Also like to thank Dr. Watson for motivating me this morning. So I'm full of energy right now, Chair Hopkins. So I'm going to try not to go too fast, but I can't make any promises. So I will be providing an update on the Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Program. But before I get into that, I want to discuss a few things because we're going to be together for, you know, probably about an hour or so. And we're going to go over a lot of information. But if you take nothing else out of what I say out of these, this next hour and a half, take these three things. Number one, when we talk about vacancies, we talk about getting people in the profession and specifically for our state, what we need to do. This will come out of my mouth continuously. We need to win board district five. Now, that doesn't mean that I, I don't appreciate all the other districts. But when we get into the data later, you will see there is a drastic vast amount of vacancies that are in that board district region. And when we talk about how we train people and how we get people in the profession and how we get them targeted, the number two thing is grow your own programs, how we utilize those to have targeted responses to the vacancies that we have. So if you want to, you know, break it down in economics, have a trickle-down economic philosophy where that's kind of how I look at our old pipeline. So you just build up this whole pipeline of teachers. And, you know, they may gravitate to one spot, we'll say Eastern Kansas perhaps. And then they would trickle down into Western Kansas eventually after all those other positions are filled. The beauty of grow your own and how we train teachers, it's allowing those local districts to invest in their communities and identify people that want to live in that community and stay in that community and give them opportunity to pinpoint that training. The third thing that it will take away is how we train special education teachers in Kansas. Dr. Schmidling will come up later today after me. And she's going to introduce a program that Fort Hays State has written that really drastically changes how we train our special education teachers. And I'm very excited... education teachers, and I'm very excited about it because it's something that we've needed for many years, but we'll get into that a little bit later as we go on. So, those three things. All right. So before I get into the full update and review of the RTAP, I would like to thank a few individuals. Number one, Dr. Gillespie, he's our RTAP coordinator. He's not able to be here with us today, but when we get into the numbers and how the actual program has grown, a lot of work has been done by Dr. Gillespie. Windshield time, going around to small districts, large districts, all across the state, I don't think there's a corner of the state that he hasn't touched, getting the information out and explaining the bits and pieces of the program. Plus, when we get into funding later, it's become more difficult over time and adjustments as we've had to look at different funding sources to make this program continue. He's done an excellent job with coordinating with outside entities in order to make sure that when we move past our metal art grant, we still actually have funding that can make this program a success. And then, of course, we have some districts out there that have been imperative in sharing the word and giving us a good example of what you can do with this program. So Jason Scheck, you should have met him last night at the new superintendent's meeting, done a great job in Dodge City, phenomenal, and he's helped us out in so many ways. Dr. Tiffany Schneider at Salina, Tanya Phillips in Taganoxie, all very important in this process as we've continued to go to program. Because I'm very excited, because when we get into the actual overall numbers, if you read the board materials, you'd see that we've already doubled this next semester, this next cohort of the total number of individuals that we had in the program previously. Now, there are some slight adjustments from when I wrote the board materials because things have changed since we had to have those submitted so early, so I'll make sure to cover that as we go through as well. All right. So for review, I know we have some new board members, so you may not be familiar with our apprenticeship program. If you are, it's probably in some other capacity other than education. So think about how we've trained individuals in the past for, to become electricians, to become plumbers, or in the trade programs. There's a lot of, a heavy apprenticeship focus in those areas, but this is now applying that for teachers in a way to train individuals to get into a teacher position. So first and foremost, it is industry-driven, and it's a career pathway where employers can develop and prepare their future workforce. So, once again, we talked about grow your own, who you hire in your community and get them trained. So they obtain paid work experience and receive a progressive wage. So if you looked in the board materials and saw the standards, you know, we have a progressive wage scale, there's a minimum that has to be attained, but as an individual goes through the program, that will continue to increase as they show competency and complete their related technical instruction or college coursework. And then, an individual will receive a portable and national-recognized credential. In this case, our teaching license is that credential. But they'll also receive something from the Department of Commerce, but our license can transfer to any state as far and allow individuals to teach. And it has to be approved. So apprenticeship programs are actually through the Department of Labor. Kansas is a state apprenticeship agency state, so they're approved through our Department of Commerce and specifically through our Kansas Apprenticeship Council, which we'll get into in a little bit as well. So our requirements in Kansas, I just touched on it, the Kansas Apprenticeship Council is kind of an approver, final approval for a program. We have to have that progressive wage scale, and for our Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Program, that is $14 an hour. Now, districts can pay more if they want, but they have to meet that minimum. Our program is a competency-based program. There's two types of apprenticeship programs, a time-based and a competency-based. So time is exactly what it is. You complete 2,000 hours, you have finished the program. Competencies, it identifies those targeted areas that you want to show growth and measure that individuals progress through, and it's tracked along there. And so it's a little different. There's a little time-based portion to it because an individual has to serve at least one year in an apprenticeship program, but those competencies and that related technical instruction will really be the driver in determining when somebody completes the program. For us, our competencies are based on the KEEP rubric, and we require semester evaluations and observations for each of our candidates. And when we talk about the evaluation, it's not only for the competencies, it's also for their related technical instruction, so they should be making progress with their college credits. And there we go. And as far as those related technical instruction providers, we have, almost all of our community colleges are now onboard, and multiple, many of our four-year colleges are onboard, and we have one out-of-state provider, Western Governors University, that is also participating in this program. And we already touched on the Kansas Teaching License. All right. So a little background on our actual program. August 2022 through May 23, this is kind of where we started our program, our initial work group with individuals. We pulled out of a pool of about 50-plus folks that were interested in doing this work, and I, and I think, Dr. New, you were part, you were part of that work group, that original one, so we appreciate your help in getting this started. So we started with our stakeholder work group, kind of floated it out there, hey, is this something we want to do in the state of Kansas? Do we find that it's valuable and a way for us to work towards knocking out some of our vacancies? And overwhelmingly, the answer was yes. So then, from August to March, we were trying to build our program, and we went through, you know, different phases of what we were going to identify as competencies or how we were going to operate. But, but as we were going through that process in March of 2023, the legislature passed the Kansas Apprenticeship Tax Grant, which basically directed Department of Commerce and Kansas State Department of Education to partner together to develop a teaching apprenticeship program. So instead of what we were doing work, now, you know, the legislature told us, we're going to do this. Then May 2023, we had our standards finally completed. It was approved by the State Board, approved by the Kansas Apprenticeship Council, and then we actually had a Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Program. And as far as funding for the program at that point, there wasn't really any, any type of funding. However, Department of Commerce received a SAF grant, which I have to refer back to my notes because my short-term memory is failing me today, was the State Apprenticeship Expansion Formula Grant, so allowed the state to invest in apprenticeship programs. And it's kind of a, it comes from Department of Commerce to depart, or excuse me, Department of Labor to Department of Commerce. And of that grant, the Department of Commerce received $6 million, about half of it, they allotted to KSTE for this particular program. So August 2023, we went ahead and started our pilot, very small pilot. We used one university and a few districts, so six districts, 14 apprentices. And for the, pretty much for that next year, that's all we worked with and continued to refine and develop how we're going to actually implement this statewide. Then Fall 2024, that was our first statewide cohort. We had 95 districts, or 95 apprentices say they were going to start the program, made up a 42 districts, so we went from 14, or six districts to 42, huge jump. And then Spring 2025, that was our, our second wave. We ended up with 81 and 52 districts, total districts. So we're continuing to grow. And then, for our Fall 2025 cohort, we now have 167 apprentices in this cohort. So we'll get into our numbers. Right now, we're actually sit with 151 returning apprentices, and we have 167 new with a total of 73 districts. So gaining a lot of momentum, a lot of speed in this program, can't be happier. I mean, we've pretty much doubled over the last year, so it's, it's truly amazing, I think. And a couple of things to be aware of, we will have five apprentices that are going to graduate at some point and meet the requirements for licensure over the summer, and we're projected to have probably another four in the fall, and then a total of somewhere between 40 and 50 that'll graduate next spring.
I'm going to ask you to pause for just a minute. Betty, did you want to, so we don't get too far away?
Sure.
Thank you. Quick question, because while this provides a panoramic view, which is fine, can we just drill down a little bit? Because one of the things that kind of concerns me is how this information is disseminated for interested candidates. And we talked before about that. I'm not sure if it's under the purview at this level to deal with that, but I had a concern particularly in the urban districts. Many people I talked to weren't aware, and while we have, you know, you look at 73 districts, take that percentage of all of the districts that we have, and you see, that's a very, very small percentage. My concern is, do we have a way of growing this where maybe you'd still end up with a small percentage of districts? But just how would we impact the awareness to individuals that might be interested in this?
Yeah. So, I mean, communication is, you know, always difficult. So we've tried our best to get the word out to school districts through different opportunities. When we meet, anytime I'm out with a district, it's one of my talking points, and we've tried to, any opportunity to engage the community, bring up the Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Program. Now, when we talk about, you know, like in, you know, the question that you had at one point with an individual, there has to be buy-in from a district to participate in this, so it's kind of like that's the first step, that a district wants to buy in. And maybe that communication could come from, you know, a candidate being interested in that and going, talking to their administrator and say, hey, you know, this program's available because we have all the information, and I hate to say it, it's on a web, on a webpage, but it's a pretty good webpage that can, you know, kind of lay out what's actually required. But that conversation has to be facilitated between the district and that individual, and we have to get district buy-in. So we've really been focused on trying to get district buy-in to the program. I know there's one school district that, you know, we reached out to, they pretty much had a refusal to join the program for a while, but then some of their paras and other folks started having conversations with them, hey, we were really interested, we'd like to become a teacher, we would like to participate in this. And that kind of ground momentum eventually led to that district deciding to join.
So, just one follow-up, I promise, just one. So it does seem like the obstacle is more the district buy-in. Is that because they have to?
Yeah. So the district is, they have to hire the individual, and then when we talk about, you know, we've had conversation on mentoring, a component of the Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Program is you have to assign that individual a mentor, and the district has to be willing to provide that on-the-job training with that individual as they progress through the program, so.
So it's, then I, to stick with that one, is there something in terms of the buy-in that, from the state level, that could be done? Or, I guess I'm kind of concerned about the small number of districts that are buying into, I say buying in.
I'm ecstatic. I'm ecstatic. I think, I think if you want to talk about, Shane knows, I give Commerce and his, everyone, kudos, two things that you've hit it out of the park. I'm talking about not just a home run, you know, like in my era, Mickey Mantle hitting the top of, the, the Teacher Design Sunflower Summer Program that now Commerce runs, and this program. So I'm ecstatic that in less than two years, you've grown this from, from 14 to 167?
Right.
So I'm not concerned.
318 apprentices.
I'm sorry.
So we haven't got to that yet.
73, 73 districts. I think, and Shane knows this, I think when we get to a cycle, you'll have 500 or so people in this cycle, some coming off, some coming on. I think this will be the most important teacher development program you've ever led.
So from a growth perspective, then you're, you're pretty pleased with that? I would, I would love, and I, and I think my concern more had, had to do with the, it seems like a reluctance with urban districts. Maybe I'm wrong, but...
So we have some, you know, 5A schools that are participating, but there, there have been a few larger school districts that we've tried to engage that, that haven't been interested in it yet. Now, some of it's political stuff on their side, or I don't exactly know all the details, but...
I just kind of wondered on that. It's, it's not a biggie, it's not like I'm minimizing this, but it's such a great program that I, I'm concerned about the reluctance, especially on the urban districts' part, to, to participate.
And I think that's a time thing. I mean, I just feel like it's going to keep building over time, and, and like Shane said, the pressure from beneath can make that difference, too. So, you know, if we're talking to anybody in the moment, it's like, go talk to your superintendent, like, it needs to go up the chain to apply some pressure from a different angle.
So if, if that awareness is not there, if it's from the districts, the district has to share that information, if you don't have those participants in those urban districts that are aware that this is available, that's kind of where, okay, they can push, but if they, if they're not aware, then they can't really push for that. So I really was concerned from an urban district participation standpoint of, is there something we can do? Kicking the can down the road, just food for thought.
So we're also, you know, further in this brief, we'll get into some, you know, potential changes for the RTAP program, and I think part of that will also energize some of those urban districts to jump onboard, because I know we've had conversations with one, and they are interested in a new facet of it, so I think that'll help as well.
Awesome. Debbie, is this the timing for your question?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, yeah, I wasn't nearly as concerned by how many are not participating because I'm really excited about the ones who are, but I was just going to ask you if you, and I know I can't task you, but if you could have the conversations about putting together a flyer possibly, that I would think that the best way I could help you, at least in my district, is to pass a flyer out to the people I know or to my, my local school board members, because I have them on email list and get this word out for you.
Yeah. And we do have a couple of one-pagers, but we could, you know, definitely design a flyer as well.
Okay. Awesome. Michelle? Okay. Okay.
All right. So as far as our program, it does require funding, so we're going to go into a couple of different funding sources that we've, or three different funding sources that we've utilized as part of this program. First and foremost is the Kansas Apprenticeship and Tax Grant Act. So when that went into effect, the legislature did allot us $3 million per year for this particular program. Now, as far as the funding, it's limited to $2,750 per apprentice per year, and those funds are actually shifted to Commerce. Commerce will actually be the payer of those funds. Now, thus far, since we qualified for our metal art grant and we've been trying to build the program, we haven't tapped into those funds yet. However, we will be tapping into those funds this year based on our numbers of individuals that we have, and, you know, our metal art grants, it's going to be exhausted. So, and we're projecting, you know, roughly about 450,000 funds will be drawn down out of the Kansas Apprenticeship Tax Grant Act. And then in the future, this will be our primary source of funding, and it can fund up to 1,090 apprentices per year. So over the next year, we will start tapping into this, and we are trying to grow to reach that full capacity of 1,090 in the next couple of years. Yes, ma'am?
And I just want to kind of point out the bullet that says it requires a one-year probation, so the first year that they're in the program, they cannot use this, you cannot use this.
So I put that in there originally when we started this program. It was told, or we were instructed we had to have a one-year probation, so that also limited our ability to touch that. That's no longer the case. So it can be, it can be district-dependent, which is about, in conversations we've had, about 30 days is what we've recommended for that person when they get enrolled, and then that'll allow us to tap into those funds a little earlier. And our metal art grant, so I have to refer back to my notes again because my short-term memory fails me. The LARQ stands for the Leading Apprenticeship Results in Kansas Grant. So Department of Commerce applied for the $6 million, gave us just under $3 million. And when we talk about this, these funds, we're set to exhaust our funds during the school year. The other $3 million that are out there, they were split up with other agencies to include our workforce boards. So we are partners with our workforce boards across the state, which there are four. And as far as finding additional funding for this next year, we're working very heavily with the workforce boards because they need to exhaust their funds as far as that grant as well. So they have agreed to pay, for, to give funds to apprentices that are in this program. So for tuition, books, and materials. What's difficult is each workforce board is kind of independent, and they make their determination on what they will pay and what they require for that payment. So some workforce boards, you know, they'll offer $1,200 a semester, some will pay, you know, $4,000 for a year, so it's, it's going to differ and depend on where an individual lives, of what they would qualify if they need to tap into those workforce board funds.
Shane, as you go through this to remind the board, the, the Apprenticeship and Tax Grant Act, that money came from where?
From the state legislature.
State legislature. Where did the metal art grant come from?
Yeah. It's Department of Commerce, well, originally from the Department of Labor to Department of Commerce. So it's, it was a federal grant that was sent to...
Federal grant. So again, so this is important because you often wonder, where do sources of income come to run this? This is a partnership with multiple state agencies and federal and state money combination. And, and there's going to be some money put in by, there's lots of sources that come together on this, so.
Yeah. And that... And that third funding source, we've encouraged, as we have new apprentices, Joel and I have met with almost every new apprentice, every new school district, to sit down with them and advise them, because we knew, you know, Medal of Art funding was going to go away, and then we would rely heavily on Kansas Apprenticeship Act. We encourage them, you know, make sure you do what you do to be eligible to qualify for, you know, the Promise Grant, Teacher Service Scholarship, Adult Learner Grant, or any university scholarship, so make sure you're applying for those as a potential funding source. And when we talk about the Adult Learner Grant, that's been funded the last couple of years, it's a few million dollars, and within 24 hours, those funds have been exhausted. And we've tried to, you know, get ahead of the curve and tell our folks, all right, this is going to open up, be, you know, get on the website at midnight, and, you know, be the first to apply. But not everybody's been successful in getting the Adult Learner Grant, so.
And again, because I'm trying to connect the dots for, for the state board. So I, I'm interested. I'm a, I'm 23 years old, I'm, I just was hired as a para, I want to get in this program. I'm, I've got, I want to try to get, I mean, the Promise Grant or any of these grants, we're going to do first, before we access the state or the federal funding. I access that, this is, this is something that you, that we didn't like very much, but I access that, I have to take the FAFSA.
Yeah.
I can't access any of those funds until I take the FAFSA.
So even the Promise?
Promise starts with the FAFSA, because it's the last money in. See this, so they want, they want first money in to come from what is your financial aid based on your income, and the last money in then are the two on the left. So I just want to, again, as you think about connecting the dots, when we talk about separate programs, sometimes you go, I don't know about, so you've got a state-funded, federal-funded, and in this case, scholarship, I'll just use that loose term of money then that would go first to the student, and then the other funds would fill in what's left. Correct, Shane?
Yes.
So what is Teacher Service Scholarship specifically?
Yeah, so when an individual has, I think it's 60 hours, and they're enrolled in a teacher preparation program, at that point, they can apply for that grant. So it has a, you have to serve in a, in a high-need school, and there's specific positions that you have to serve in. But pretty much, if you're in Board Region Five, you qualify because of a high-need area, and then if you're, you know, our top five, which we'll get into vacancy data later, so our top five mirrors those needs for the Teacher Service Scholarship. So if they're special education, math, science, ELA elementary, then they're going to qualify for that Teacher Service Scholarship.
And there are quite a few of our universities specific to the teacher, like, they have quite a bit out there for scholarships.
Yes, and I, and I think, the last numbers, I think about 989 people can qualify for the Teacher Service Scholarship, and we talk about funds that are paid out, roughly 5,500 for a year, I think that's what it is, 5,500, 6,000, somewhere in that neighborhood. And then the Promise Grant, you know, you're talking about, about 2,500, 2,700 for that. And the Adult Learner Grant was, I think, around the $5,000 range as well. All right, so it's just going to get a little messy with our funding, because we have different sources, and we're about to run of our Medal of Art funding, so this will be the last year that we tap into Medal of Art grant funding. So our continuing apprentices, they are going to receive a total of $5,000 for tuition books and materials, and that'll be paid out, 2,500 for the fall semester, 2,500 for the spring semester, and $1,500 for a mentor stipend for those mentor teachers that are working with our apprentices, and that's broken up into payments. So $750 for a semester, $750, or $750 fall semester, $750 spring semester. So that's, when we get into numbers, 151 apprentices that are in the program now, that's what they'll qualify for. Now, as far as the KTAG funding, we, we operate that, they have a fall semester, a spring semester, and a summer semester, so they will be tapping into those funds to pay for that summer semester. When we talk about our Fall 2025 cohort, and that number is actually inaccurate, it's 167, not 163. For Medal of Art funds, from what, what, what I'm asking for you to approve to pay out, they would receive 1,500, and that would cover the mentor stipend. So it's, you know, roughly 250,000 that they would qualify for to pay for the mentor stipend. We will be leveraging the Kansas Tax Apprenticeship Grant Act money to pay for their tuition and utilizing our workforce boards in order to cover the rest of the tuition, if there's anything that's left over to pay for. So when we talk about funding, and you will receive in your Friday notes a breakdown of a, a district breakdown of what the totals are for each district that's participating, but trying to keep this, so you can digest it, because it's going to be a total, and you'd have to go do the math, but it's bottom line for our returning folks that have already been part of the, the program, they're going to receive $6,500 for next school year, and that's how it'll be broken up, so that's a title, a total of 981,500. And then our new apprentices, the 167, they'll receive that 1,500 for, for the next school year, and that's what our ask is as far as funding. The Medal of Art Board and the tax grant money, that's all coordinated through Department of Commerce, Commerce or that workforce board.
And I guess, again, to kind of emphasize, and just cement it in my own mind, the 1,500 goes to the mentor, because if you have a apprentice, you, they have to be with a mentor.
You have to be, yep, and they're limited.
The entire time.
You can have no more than, a mentor can only serve two apprentices.
Gotcha.
Yeah. All right, so the next part is a transition, as we're looking at, how do we continue to grow the program, get more people into it, and see how we can truly maximize the impact of our tax grant funds. Currently, as it stands, for an individual to qualify to be in the Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Program, they cannot hold a bachelor's degree. It's geared towards getting someone in, you know, maybe that's, you know, how to experience a para or another community member that needs to work on that bachelor's degree. So what we're looking to add is another addition.
Shane, just again, you don't have to be working as a para.
No.
I mean, we, you could, you'd be teaching Sunday School for the last 10 years, or, hey, I know someone that, I mean, that I think is going to be a good, right, it could be anyone in your community.
Yes.
So we, so oftentimes, it is a para, because someone's recognized that, but it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, and it could be, you, you think about the emergency substitute change that you made. It could be somebody that, you know, has served as a substitute teacher in the district, you see great promise, that district sees great promise in them, they want to transition them into a full-time teacher, or like Dr. Watson said, a community member. Anyone that that district fills would, would be, you know, work well with students and really positively influence their district, they can get into the program. So the next phase that we're looking to add is actually a part of the program for individuals that have a bachelor's degree. So we're going to later, in one of my other presentations, we're going to talk about other Grow Your Own programs and assess, some of those are well-suited and nested to fit into the actual Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Program. So when we talk about limited apprentice licenses, restricted license, that Teacher of the Year who transitioned from business into becoming a teacher, I mean, this would be an opportunity where they could go through this program as well, get additional support and additional funding to help pay for, you know, that, that program that they're completing, because most of those programs are master's degree programs, and they're not cheap. So that's another area that we're looking to grow, and the final area that we're looking is a youth apprenticeship program. So when we think about, I think, actually Natalie will follow me and talk about a CTE update, so there is a teacher learning pathway that's built in with the Career and Technical Ed standards. And when we look to start working to create a youth apprenticeship program, we talk about our programs are competency-based, that's basically where our competencies come from, is the standards that are set up through our teacher learning pathway and our CTE team, but we did a lot of coordination with local school districts, Department of Commerce, and other providers as far as looking at the, the youth apprenticeship program and what we wanted to build. But the bottom line is, it's going to be targeted to, to work with those high school juniors and seniors that are interested in becoming a teacher, they're in their teacher training pathway, the district can hire them to work a few hours a day in the school district as a para teacher's aide, and then while they're taking, completing the teaching learning pathway, some of that stuff will be high school credit, but we're also trying to develop a way that they could potentially come out with a associate's degree in teaching and some type of teaching program, and we could tap into our funding to pay for those dual credit courses. You know, my son just graduated, we, he paid, we had to pay quite a bit for dual credit courses, and it will help cover that cost, especially for some folks that, you know, may not have the, the money to pay for that dual credit. But bottom line, you could have someone that's graduating from high school, they complete the youth apprenticeship, or stay in it, depending on what they want to do, they could transition to the adult apprenticeship, may already have 30 to 60 hours of college credit already completed, and they can just transition into their teacher preparation program, finish out the additional two years. So we were basically getting people into the classroom a couple of years earlier than that traditional model. And so that's, you know, that would be our other request, that we're approved to expand the program and include those two options moving forward. And that is the end of this particular presentation, so any questions you may have?
Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you kind of answered, because you talked about, you said Natalie or somebody from, they're going to talk about CTE and how those interrelate as far as.
Well, they're not going to, probably not specifically talk about this, I'm just saying, within our team, they started.
That's what my question was, is how, how do those inter, how do those two things interrelate? That was my question earlier, and I thought, you kind of answered some of that, but I thought, that was my question, is how, how do those two things interrelate, so.
Yeah, so, did you want me to answer that again, or you're good to go?
I guess you can, sure.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
So, so when we talk about the youth apprenticeship program, we talk about the competency standards, so that's tied into the teacher learning pathway that CT upstairs operates. So if a district's looking to start a teacher learning pathway, they have to, you know, certain things have to be approved in order for them to participate in that program. So we just take what the requirements are for that pathway, plugged it into our apprenticeship program, and then they'll have to meet the pathway competencies, and then also the additional requirements of the apprenticeship program. That's working with a mentor teacher, a progressive wage scale for that individual as they're working in the district, and they have to show progress on meeting competencies and their, their coursework, whether it's the high school credits or it's the college credits. Did that answer your question, I hope?
I'm thinking, I'm processing all this.
Okay.
Questions to.
And I'm probably talking fast.
I'm trying to dissect.
Debbie?
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, Michelle, I've already processed, I've already put on Facebook, I've already, so I'm sure it's out there. But I did want to clarify something, because as I'm hearing you say the youth portion, I wanted to ensure that all of these teacher apprentice people, you know, the people involved, are they going through all the things a normal teacher would have to do, the background checks, the safety checks, all that, any licensure standards that would be applied, even to youth that are involved in that, I would want to make sure that all those are in place.
Yeah, so nothing has changed as far as the licensure requirement, they still have to meet our requirements, so completing that teacher preparation program, having that bachelor's degree, and so all that remains in place. What's that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so whenever we're talking about background check, these are employees of the local school district, when they do apply for a license, yes, they will have to have that background check through us, but there's a local background check process they have to go through as far as the apprenticeship program. So we are not actually doing a background check at the state for our Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Programs, because what authorizes us to do background checks through the Adam Walsh Act is, is our license, because we're not issuing them a license yet, so the, the local, we have to rely on the district with that local background check.
Which I'm sure they.
So it's not even, they, they don't even fall somehow under licensure, like apprentice license or something that would, okay.
Yeah, so we, so we don't have a license right now, because they're not actually licensed educators at the moment.
I do have a little, I guess, I guess if they have paras, we don't have licensure for paras, so the school does their own.
But they do background checks, yeah.
But it does make me a little nervous that, that anybody would confuse them as a state-licensed somebody who didn't get a background check, you know, that would be.
So remember, this is a training program to get them transitioned in, so there's not going to be a license available, but there are a couple of our programs, we take Wichita State's Limited Teacher Apprenticeship Program, this feeds into the apprenticeship program, so there is an opportunity where that person may, or the district may ask them if they wanted to apply for a license, that limited license, and then in that case, yes, they would have the background check through us, we would issue them a license, and they would finish through the Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Program.
Darrell?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. And Shane and Joe, I just want to compliment you, number one, because I can recall those, the raw start, and we were trying to figure out what we could do in Kansas to meet a really pressing need, and looking at what other states are doing, and at that time, nobody was doing what you've achieved today. So definitely making this connection for individuals who want to serve in Kansas to be able to do that, and really, in my heart, I'm just clapping, because I'm so excited to see what you all have been able to accomplish in such a short period of time. But then beyond that, to see Kansas probably emerging as a national leader in this area, and I'm sure people are going to be looking at what you've done, using it as a template, so you're not just helping the kids of Kansas, you're helping the kids of our nation most likely as, as we continue this. So anything I can do, even as a board member, to just help encourage and support you, I'm glad to do that, but I can say firsthand, Topeka Public Schools has been greatly benefited by the work that you're doing, and I know many other school districts across the state have as well. So, thank you, I'm proud of you, and I'm clapping for you.
Thank you. So, so I will point out one thing, so I, I would say, yes, the only state that would be ahead of us right now, I would say, is Tennessee, because they started it, and, you know, pretty much we're all, you know, piggybacking off their model. But when we talk about the youth apprenticeship, growth of that particular model, there's only one other state that kind of started that process, and that was West Virginia. So I, I say, yeah, we're at the forefront of this, and then, you know, Dr. Gillespie is, you know, we've worked with other states, you know, if they needed assistance, and we just kind of, you know, laid out what we did, and if it's useful for them, you know, we're, you know, hopeful that, you know, we can provide some assistance, because, you know, we had help too. We had help from Tennessee, West Virginia, Wyoming, as we were looking to build the program, so, so we try to pass that on.
Nice. Okay. Are you done in this part, correct?
If, if.
If we're done.
I think I'm done.
Okay, I think we are too. We do have a break on the agenda, so we're going to take a 10-minute break and be back at 10:30. We'll make it eight minutes, 10:30.
Adopted into this apprenticeship program is like a short, quick way to apprentice in those out of state. Cause I don't know where it's at right now. I was following it while I was out there crocheting, but um that that we were not allowing um a lot of states to. Like my daughter-in-law is licensed as a teacher in Texas. I don't think she can just transfer it here. But maybe that apprenticeship would be a great way for a teacher to do that.
Yeah, well, if if they already have a teaching license out of state, then they they would just need to apply uh for the license. So we've had a couple of changes within regulations and statutes uh or statutes that impact the individuals coming from out of state. So one, a couple of years ago, we joined Interstate Teacher Mobility Compact. And when we talk about importing folks on our border, we have Oklahoma, Colorado, Nebraska. All are part of that compact, which basically says you apply to this state, complete your background check. Then you're going to receive a reciprocal license of of what the what Kansas has that's equivalent to your license. So that's that's one recent change. The other uh within the last three years is statute forty-eight thirty-four zero six, which basically states if individual has a license out of state. They intend to be a resident of Kansas, uh or if they're military affiliated, they have experience. Uh I'm I'm dumbing this down a little bit, have experience within the last year or two years. Then uh they're going to receive a reciprocal license as well. Go through our background check process and then whatever license we have equivalent uh to that. And that has greatly changed how we've processed uh individuals coming from out of state. So you brought up Texas specifically in the past. Texas has uh approximately, you know, twenty-nine, thirty different um non. Well, I'll we'll call them alternative routes uh to the classroom. So those are, when I say alternative, I'm talking about third-party uh program providers that aren't through higher ed. It's not tied with a with a university or college uh that transitioned them in the classroom. And historically, those individuals had uh some difficulty coming into Kansas. And there was a whole process set up to to kind of evaluate them, determine if they qualify for a license. But with statute forty-eight thirty-four zero six, that goes away. They meet the experience requirement regardless of the type of program they completed. They would qualify for a Kansas license. Alright, as far as our exit data, um so I'd like to point out the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I ran some additional uh data uh recently uh on behalf of the commissioner, and it really stuck out to me. And I want to get a give you a little clarification on this. So if it says for school year twenty-three, twenty-four or twenty-four, twenty-five, the information, the exit date is actually a year behind. So so for twenty-four, twenty-five, it's people that exited uh as of June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three, like the year before, before that. Actually, it'd be June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four. Look, I'm getting myself confused. So it would be from July first of twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four. So that would show up on the school year twenty-four, twenty-five data, school year twenty-three, twenty-four. You know, go back another year and that information's in there. So our exit date is always about a year behind. But as you can s- as you can see, you know, that twenty-three, twenty-four school year significant change. And when we talk about, uh, the commissioner mentioned about, uh, you know, he's used the term bringing the profession. I don't know if he used that uh earlier, but we talk about leadership. Uh, we'll get into some age information about leadership, but there was a huge drop in um uh leaders that transitioned out of their roles uh during that school year. But that seems like that's that major blip. Maybe it just took a little while for COVID to catch up, but but that's when it really impacted us. And now, as we move into the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, you can see it's kind of leveled off somewhat and uh kind of more consistent with what what would have happened, you know, around the the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. But um leaving uh leaving the profession, the good news is, you know, those numbers have dropped. I mean, we did have a rise in retirements somewhat, but still pretty consistent on retirements. And I've always feel that, hey, we're all trying to get to that retirement someday, and we need to encourage people to retire and and enjoy their life at some point. So I kind of take that as a good thing, but that does cause us some additional issues. Alright, so some just uh demographic information, standard information. Number one, uh, if you see a number in parentheses, that means that was the previous year's data. So for the largest group of educators this school year, it was one to four years of experience. And then if you look at parentheses, it also says one to four. So that was uh consistent with what was reported last year. Same thing with the experience, uh, you know, average age of teachers, a little drop, average age of educators, a little drop. We talk about, you know, that experience and the and the age, profession get a little younger. I mean, it seems like it's a small blip, but we're talking about thousands of folks. So one percentage change is a, you know, pretty big deal. Uh, we talk about salary. We've continued to grow since I've uh presented this uh information the last five years. I think when I first started, the average salary for first-year teacher was about thirty-nine thousand. So over the last few years, it's grown to four, almost forty-five thousand. Same thing for average salary salary for teachers. I think it was somewhere around, you know, fifty-six, fifty-seven, but it's continued to grow.
Shane, stay on that for just a sec, if you don't mind. We talked about the leadership shortage, largest group of educators, one to four years of experience. That's where we, so they've been trained, but they need support and they need continual training to be effective. But you know that in any career, and that's why we've got to commit and you'll talk about about leadership, but all of that is true. That forty-four thousand, six oh nine, remember, that's the average. So Michelle, in your area, that's low. In your area, that may be high, especially in Northwest Kansas, where they're not even some districts, I think, at forty thousand a few, right? In certain areas. So just realize when you look at averages, again, you get into the suburb suburbs and the urban areas, that's going to be low. But when you get in the rural, some rural, sparsely rural, that's, uh, excuse me, that and that's going to be high.
And I'm going to ask real quick because we see the word and I just it's constant with me educator versus teacher. So help me out.
Yeah, so that that should actually have first-year teacher. So it's um it it doesn't have our administrators in there. So it's, that is also our teachers. That's just a, no, this is, this is, that is still just teacher, first-year teacher information. I, yeah, I should have, I should have put teacher in there.
So when we say teacher, we mean classroom.
We mean classroom teacher.
Okay, when we say educator.
Then it's everybody. It could be, we have um six different areas that we would pull from on that. It would be administrators, school specialists, uh, current technical ed teachers, um, special education teachers, elementary teachers, and middle school teachers to calculate that.
Okay, and Debbie, did you have a question on this part? I'm sorry? No, they're not licensed. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Alright, so I asked you to remember that number as far as the stability of our school districts, the number is around eighty-seven percent. So if you look on the far right-hand side, um, under twenty-twenty-four, that is our um actual retention rate for educators in their third year. So they started the profession, they're in their third year of experience, so it's eighty-nine point two-nine. So it's a little higher than what we see for the rest of our veteran educators. However, if you look back uh over time, uh, as far as retention of those individuals in that third year of teaching, it was really, really high. We started to go down a little bit. The state board implemented a two-year mentoring uh program versus a uh one-year. Then we kind of leveled off, then we started to grow, and then uh COVID happened and we had the huge drop again. So we're trying to rebuild up from COVID. Uh, the good news is we are on a decline and it's continuing to improve. Alright, uh, so we talked about non-grow-your-own programs and this term is alternative. Uh, I like to refer to it as non-traditional because in Kansas, we truly don't have any alternative programs in that. Teacher education is provided by a third-party entity not associated with a college or university. So that's why I prefer the term non-traditional. But uh our non-traditional programs, which all of these are encompassed in with grow-your-own, and what we're talking about is expansion of the Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Program. These are some of the opportunities of uh of license opportunities that would fit into that program very well, uh, because all of them require um mentoring. They require basically competencies that uh that a person has to track as they go through the program. Uh, so it's uh fits, it's nested extremely well. Uh, as far as our restricted license, that's for individuals that are transitioning uh to teaching, but they have a background in a content area, secondary. Or think about history, government, social studies, math, uh, science and teaching six, sixth grade to twelve. We also have some all-level endorsements that are covered with that. Uh, that's our our language, art, uh, PE and music. Those would all be eligible for restricted licenses. Uh, the limited residency license, that's geared towards our special education teachers, requires individuals to hold a bachelor's degree. Uh, this was part of the transition of how we trained uh special education uh teachers in Kansas. It's kind of helped our situation uh get a little better. Uh, well, it continues to get worse. It would be worse if we didn't have these programs, I assure you. Uh, but individual has a bachelor's degree and they can transition into a high incidence or low incidence uh program. The limited TAP, uh, this geared towards elementary. Uh, there's a license uh route that's available. There's a lot of folks that are in the TAP program. It requires employment as a parent in a school district, but they choose not to apply for the license. So though there's a small amount of folks that have a license, there's a lot of folks in that particular program. Uh, but it allows, uh, once again, uh, an individual to work in a school district as they're completing their their college credit. And the TAP program is unique in that it inverts how uh individuals are trained. So someone can start from zero credits. They start taking some teacher education courses at the beginning uh of their program. And then general ed electives, general ed uh requirements and electives are sprinkled in throughout the the program. But they're getting uh pedagogy training from day one. Uh, we also have the limited elementary residency program, so that's also geared to individuals that have a bachelor's degree that are looking to transition into the classroom. Uh, so um, once again, um, it's a graduate degree program, so they complete a a few hours of classroom management and a couple out, another course. And then they could qualify for the license and they teach while they finish their program. But all of these programs over the years, uh, they've been a transition and they continue to grow. Alright, we talk about uh some licensure data, so I'll be upfront. That number of the twenty-two thousand eight hundred and five, it's actually low because uh we typically pull licensure data from July first through June thirtieth of a given year. So this was pulled in May. That number will approach twenty-five thousand by the end of this month. And uh as far as the licensure information on there, if you look in the twenty-twenty-five school year, that twenty-one seventy-eight is going to grow a little bit. Probably not much more, um, maybe up to twenty-three hundred or so. And then our out-of-state should increase by about a hundred uh with applications that we have pending right now. So those numbers are a little low, but it it's a little more consistent with what we've what we've experienced over the last couple of years.
Okay, so you, and I might have missed it, so I apologize, but the total number of licenses issued, those are renewals.
No, that's all licenses. It could be renewal, substitute license, professional license, yeah. And uh our CTE specialized, we've received, you know, quite a bit of growth for that. For that particular certificate, it requires an individual to have uh nationally recognized, an industry-recognized credential. And um based on their experience, they have to meet experience requirements, uh, but they can be qualified to teach in a career pathway, in a CTE pathway only. Uh, specific courses that match their uh specific expertise um in in the in the industry. Alright, I'm going to go ahead and go into some seal of literacy information uh for you all right now, and I will be upfront. There are a lot of folks in Kansas that are trained, that are not reflected within the five thousand two hundred and thirty-three uh seals of literacy that we've added to license licenses. We're going to work on it. So our percentage percentage right now, it's a little lower, but uh from from what I reported, but it, but in in all honesty, it should be a little higher. What you have, uh, the breakout is uh moving from left to right, we have our early childhood only. As you remember, when we talk about letters training, there's three different trainings that are available. If an individual is serving in an early childhood position, then they're eligible to take the early childhood training. So based on uh last year's report of assignments that I pulled, we had roughly one thousand four hundred and seven uh individuals that were reported in early childhood positions. So those fourteen hundred and seven would be uh eligible to complete letters for element or for early childhood educators and meet the seal of literacy requirement. So we've, right about twenty-four percent, three hundred and forty-three have received their seal of li- uh of literacy. Moving to the next column to the right, those are our elementary teachers. That is our biggest group uh by far, so fourteen thousand six hundred and forty-five. And thus for thus far, we've added about three thousand three hundred and seventeen um seals of literacy uh to those individuals. And that gives us a total of about twenty-three percent. Keep in mind, when we talk about seals of literacy that's added to licenses, not everybody has a requirement. So there could be somebody that's teaching middle school. Um, we're not going to, they're not going to be calculated in this in this percentage because they don't have a requirement to meet the seal of literacy, however they have met it, and it will be, you know, part of our total. And then you go on down to the school specialist and administrators. Um, so our administrator number is is low right now. However, we we are projected within the next uh few months, uh, there's about eight hundred people that are enrolled in letters, so that that's going to jump up. So they're starting to finish. Uh, some people finished in June, uh, after I pulled the data, so they'll get, I I pulled data monthly. And then we add the seals of literacy uh once a month. So we pull it at the end of the month and at the beginning of the month, uh, add that seal of literacy. So that number is expected to grow. And when we talk about training, um, so we'll talk about elementary letters. So right now, you see that number of three thousand three hundred and seventeen for elementary teachers. If you step on down and look at, uh, you know, the past uh elementary letters, volume one, there's about eight thousand four hundred and two hundred, four hundred and seventy-three people that have done that. So there will be additional folks uh within the next year that are going to finish letters, and that number is going to jump. Uh, in addition, we have other program providers too. Uh, K-Bore, uh, right now, they have approximately three hundred and sixty uh individuals that are enrolled in their foundation courses. They're projecting about thirteen hundred and sixty-five uh individuals to complete during school year twenty-twenty-six. They want to have at least fifteen hundred, that's their goal, uh, so maybe we'll get closer to that number. And that's going to be, you know, primarily geared towards our elementary teachers, but other people can take those courses as well. And um as far as, you know, that process, there was concern about uh individuals, you know, jumping ship from letters to take the foundation courses. So they do have a screening process in place, uh, so there's assurance statements that the candidate has to sign and state that they're not enrolled. And then they also do a district verification with the administrator to make sure that they're not enrolled in letters. And uh, we've had about four hundred and sixty-six individuals pass uh test seven zero zero two. Many of those, well, I can't say many of those. We have to break these down individually and basically look them up, uh, because not all data systems translate to to easy searchable data. Uh, so we kind of have to manually do those. Um, but I estimate about two hundred of those are probably veteran educators that have passed that. So that's going to make uh the elementary teacher number rise as well. And um, we also have within individuals that have completed um elementary letters. There's about a thousand people that we have to look up manually and try to contact that may have enrolled in the system and used a nickname or used a a email address that we can't find in either our uh licensed personnel report information or in their application data. So we can't make a a hundred percent verification that they are this individual, so we have to reach out to them. And we've experienced that as people moved, those email addresses don't work, so it comes back undeliverable. Uh, so it's going to be a struggle with that population. However, we also have built in within our uh processes that if one individual renews their professional license, all, if they provide us, you know, their their um completion certificate or their transcript from letters that verifies they passed uh their unit exams, then we'll add that seal of literacy. So there's a a fail-safe to catch those individuals.
And then, of course, we just added last month, two more paths to the seal.
We did, and so Reed Redefined, we have added two uh thus far, so, uh, but I do expect some uh other individuals to start submitting in those certificates.
Have those a little bit additionals, and I know most of those will probably be your specialist, I'm I'm assuming, uh, because it's a very deep dive, so.
Shane, remind the board, when did the criteria for the seal of literacy, what, when was that?
Yeah, so that would have been uh May of last year, May twenty-twenty-four, that's when the state board uh officially approved it. And then we started communicating the requirements out to the field uh roughly in June uh following that board meeting, as far as the eighty percent on the exam.
Good numbers for a year, and look at the numbers that are halfway through, eighty-four hundred. And then later on, we're going to talk about a lack of funding. Because right now, we're at the real bulk of people going through that training, and we lost the the blueprint funding from the state. And when, right now, we've lost the federal funding, and it's, anyway, that's what's so important about this work as we think about the development. For truly serious about literacy, this is the first step. We got to get beyond this step, but this is the first step of getting everyone with a base knowledge of of how to turn, of how to work with kids.
Right, because it is the base knowledge and the common language and the thing that helps it all come together across the district wide. And with, and I believe, and I uh talked to Ben a little bit about this, but with the Phillips and with Reed Redefined being on the at-risk list, which I also think aims and keys to literacy are too, at-risk dollars can be used to pay for those. So that could be some help as well.
Yeah, and um one other, one other thing I'd like to bring up about this. So the 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 total number of uh individuals that are going to require the training, that's going to be a fluid number. Each year could be different because uh retirements, uh, people leaving the state, uh, new individuals coming into profession. But the good news is, if somebody's new coming into profession, they've completed our new standards, they're going to complete our new tests. So they're already actually going to qualify for the seal of literacy and have had that training. So we'll still, over time, see that required list number, even though it may change and fluctuate, our train is going to continue to climb, so. Alright, alright, vacancies. Let's see. Boy, I'm way behind. I'm rolling. Alright, so we're going to, you're going to see some data about the fall collection, which you saw back in October. And then the changes uh that we had in twenty-twenty-five or spring of twenty-twenty-five. You would have also received in the Friday notes, I think it was the end of March, beginning of April, an actual uh listing of all the vacancies um uh across the state. So all two thousand two hundred and four of those are laid out into their actual um positions that uh that that they were. Alright, so what is a vacancy? It's any position that's not filled, or it's an in a position that's filled with somebody that's not licensed appropriately. And that could include somebody that's got an expired license or they were never licensed. Uh, it could be a substitute that's serving as a teacher record, including the emergency substitute teachers. Uh, and uh, bottom line is if they're not qualified, uh, so if you have a math teacher that's teaching English, they wouldn't be listed as qualified because they don't hold that endorsement. They would be listed on uh the vacancy report. When it's not a vacancy, so we discussed a lot of um non-traditional grow-your-own pathways into uh the classroom, they're on a license, they're considered pre-service standard license-qualified because they don't have the full license, but they have a license for that area to teach. Also, the the board approves waivers, quite a few waivers throughout the school year, uh, individuals on a waiver, uh, excluding the emergency substitute. Uh, they they still would be reported as a as a vacancy. But mo- most of our waivers are for special education as people are transitioning into a special education position. And then provisional licenses, which are set up, once again, special education is the main area that we have provisional licenses as they're finishing that graduate degree program, which when we talk about uh changes in how we train special education teachers, we're going to talk about non-graduate degree uh opportunities, uh, which when Catherine's up here to talk about four-day state, a real program, everybody should be excited about uh a bachelor's degree program that trains individuals directly into uh high incidence and low incidence special education, but we'll save that for the next brief. Alright, uh, we look at our vacancies, uh, fall of twenty-twenty-four, you see that column on the left, so that was reported as of September twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-four. Uh, you move over into the field, so that means uh when the district is required to submit their licensed personnel report, which is due on March first of twenty-twenty, March first of any given year. They have to take a look at their vacancies that they had in the fall. Did they hire any people to fill any of those vacancies? If so, they change their status to filled. Now, they also unfortunately have to, if they have new vacancies, they'll add those as part of that report too. So in that right-hand column, those are the actual uh total amount of vacancies that we have. So if you're trying to do math and and add up five oh five plus fifty-three, you're going to get frustrated. It's never going to add because that's not what it's, that's not what the column's doing. We had five hundred and five uh vacancies in fall of twenty-twenty-four, and then um we ended up having five hundred and five fifty-seven uh vacancies total uh for spring twenty-twenty-five for special education. Historically, this is our top five, and it has continued to be our top five. We flip-flopped special education and elementary one year, but uh I guess that's an anomaly. Special education is back into being our highest level of vacancies that we experience. Once again, think about how we train uh special education educator or special education teachers and the process that we've done in the past. Uh, bottom line total is two thousand two hundred and four vacancies. Uh, this chart is your uh board district breakdown. So if you look in uh board district five, uh, you will see that number is uh quite larger than everybody else. Uh, as board uh district five, it's a large region and a lot, lot more opportunities in there to have vacancies. But once again, this is why I say if we, if we win board district five and create uh programs and policies that uh get after their vacancies, those can easily, we can take that playbook and adjust those to folks that uh live everywhere else across the state. Um, and that's why I talk about the focus being there. And um, but that's not to say, once again, that 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 you're, the issues that you're having in your board district, those are important as well, so. Any questions on that? I guess I could tell you how to read, read the uh, read the actual chart. So it's the top five, and if you see a number in red, red's bad, green's good. Green means you had an improvement in that area. Red means you had a a decrease or or added more vacancies, I guess, is the ba- best way to think about it. But but bottom line, we, you know, a couple of districts showed some improvement, but overall, we continue to have vacancies in other districts.
Okay, Debbie, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So um, obviously, a number of our boards overlap USDs. So when you were counting for those numbers, would that be double counted? Was it counted to, you know, like, especially like Betty and I with two-five-nine? That could make a lot of difference if you count it for both of our districts.
Yeah, so that's, unfortunately, the system isn't set up to have double counting, or it 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 may be skewed in one area where a vacancy, you know, may actually sit uh within another board district. So only one board district can be entered for any district, so um that could cause some issues as as far as that, if you have that overlap.
Poor Betty, she probably got all the USDs.
She she would have, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Alright, uh, oh, hey, special education again. We talk about how we train special education teachers. Uh, high incidence, uh, when we talk, when we break down the actual numbers for uh special education. A high incidence, uh, which was also referred to as adaptive in the past, that is flip-flopped. Boy, I'm doing a great job on my slides. Um, so our high incidence is, you know, every year, it has been the highest uh number of vacancies that we have. The low incidence, over the last two years, it's continued to grow. You know, two years ago, we were probably sitting around fifty-three vacancies for uh low incidence, but the last two years, it's continued to increase and almost doubled. Uh, and then also, within that category for special education, is gifted visually impaired, deaf, hard of hearing, um, is encapsulated in there, so all those areas. But high incidence, low incidence, how we train those individuals, if we're going to get after our vacancies, that has to be addressed. Uh, as far as our vacancy reasons, uh, starting back from fall of twenty-twenty-three, you can see trends in the data. Good news, no applicants. Uh, it's continued to go down. As I've gone across the state and had different conversations about with districts about Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Program or anything that I'm updating them, I always ask, hey, how do you, how do you feel about your vacancies this year? Are you showing any improvement? I've had numerous districts say, we've had multiple applicants apply for our positions. Where in the past, they're like, no applicants, nobody's applying. Now they're like, we actually have to make a choice. And, you know, that's some small schools, some large schools, it's across the board. And I'm not saying it's, you know, it it it's super rosy, but I mean, there, I mean, it is a good news story that, you know, in some of these areas, that we're actually getting, you know, multiple applicants. When you break down into the 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 next uh row, the not fully qualified based on endorsement area, I mean, I take this as, you know, a bit of positive as well. Uh, so that number's continued to grow. What that means is, we have people, now we have to be committed to providing them support and getting them trained and getting them appropriately licensed. So more work on our end, but it's much better to have that uh situation than having no applicants and nobody uh that that wants to work in your school district. And, you know, many of the other vacancies that are listed on here are um what I call self-inflicted wounds. That's the district making the decision uh for whatever reason, and then they list that position as a vacancy. Alright, that's all of the Licensed Personnel Report. Okay, is everybody still waking with me? I'm joking. That's right. Should be a testing. Alright, we can all clap. We're almost done. You're almost done with me. This is the last one. Here we go. Uh, so um, what we're going to cover now is from from a licensure perspective. Part of our requirement to qualify for a license is, you know, not only a bachelor's degree, uh, completing a teacher preparation program, but we also require a test, a content test for individuals who qualify for a for a license. Uh, so we're going to go through the process because every year, um, we have certain tests that are regenerated or replaced uh by our test provider, ETS. And a pretty standard process, and I know you're dealing with a lot of uh assessment, uh, you know, for pre-K twelve. We have a process that's similar, but but not it, not not, not exactly the same of of with what we do for pre-K twelve. So uh, we'll get into that a little bit. So first and foremost, when we talk about our test process and uh and our our major partner, once again, is ETS. There's other uh test providers. Uh, Pearson is an example. Uh, you have approved Pearson as a um, their foundations of reading course, uh, as something qualify for, or foundations of reading test to qualify for a seal of literacy. But ETS and Pearson are kind of the two biggest testing entities uh in the nation. So uh, they provide a lot of our higher ed uh tests um for for different states. But when we talk about the process, number one, uh, a test has got to be selected for regeneration or replacement. And is it just willy-nilly that that happens? No, uh, typically, it's about a year out. If there is any type of change, that's uh going to be made. ETS would notify us that, hey, this test is going to be regenerated or replaced and, you know, give us the reason. And that way that we can start working on, you know, getting whatever groups we have together uh to take a look at whatever those tests are that need to be replaced. After they've notified um the state agency on down the road, they will eventually request volunteers from each SEA uh to uh provide uh to create a panel, a multi-state standards adding panel of content. Um, specialists that will go in and start looking at the tests and uh kind of break out and develop those technical reports and set the standards and cut scores that we're going to. technical reports and set the standards and cut scores that we're going to discuss a little bit later. And as far as, you know, Kansas, we've had very good volunteer rate for individuals that have sat on these panels. Most, any test that's ever regenerated or is getting created, we've had a lot of volunteers that have requested to be on those panels. And so test goes through its multi-state standard setting. That panel creates the cut scores, generates the technical reports for us. We get that information, teacher licensure specifically, then we set that up with our professional standards board to kind of go through and review, you know, those changes, technical reports and, and the recommended cut score. The professional standards board will make a recommendation to the state board, and then the state board will act on it. In the past, this has been part of the consent agenda item, but but not this year, so you're getting this information to get, to build a better understanding of what we go through for licensure in our tests. And then once it is approved or disapproved, if it's approved, then teacher licensure updates the test, kind of our cycle that we operate on. For us, once a test is approved, it goes into effect September 1st of that year. So we have two tests that are going to go before you today. Those two tests, if they are approved, would go into effect on one September of 2024. The old test would expire on August 31st of 20, or excuse me, 2025. The old test would expire on August 31st of 2025. If a candidate passed that exam prior to the expiration date, we would accept it for up to five years. But if an individual takes that old expired test after the September 1st date, then we can no longer accept it because it's no longer our test. All right, so a little bit more information about the test process, when can a test be regenerated, replaced, or created? This is pretty standard business, so at a minimum, ETS likes to initiate a review every 10 years just to have folks come in, take a look at that test and see if, you know, maybe the standard's changed, or maybe there were some bad questions in there that they want to make change. But every 10 years, at a minimum, they'll create a, a, a multi-state standard panel to go through that test and regenerate it. You could have standard changes, good example of this would be, you know, our reading specialist test that you approved for this illiteracy a few months ago, back in 2020 when that was adopted. 2017, IDA, ILA made recommendations as far as dyslexia and science of reading, and so there were some standard changes. So ETS, in order to accommodate those changes, reviewed tests and updated tests, and, and then we had that opportunity to review and accept that new test as our requirement for reading specialist. Test feedback and usage, so sometimes we, states create, we have a, we had a middle-level generalist endorsement that's in our regulations, there used to be a test for that. However, the test doesn't, there's not enough usage, so the company, ETS couldn't keep that test being offered, so they, they removed it. So that's no longer an option. Or if, you know, there's constant feedback about the test, which you're going to experience with our elementary. So ETS offers numerous elementary exams, they're trying to consolidate those, and then based on feedback from other states too. So our elementary test will change in the next two years, you know, based on some of the feedback that they've received from other SEAs. And then we can, you know, if you all made a determination that you didn't like a test, maybe we had a huge failure rate in a specific test. We want to take a look and say, hey, is this test aligned to what our standards are? And if it doesn't, then we could say, hey, we don't want to use this test, we want something else designed or utilize one of your other tests. So multiple different ways that a, a test can be reviewed or regenerated. And then for KSTE, who's actually reviewing our tests. So when Catherine comes up here and explains about the, you know, standards, if they've been updated and gone through, when we have those standard review teams, we have them take a look at our test to make sure any standard changes we see, that, that, any standard changes we make are still, that test is still a good measure for those changes that we've made. And a great example of this is, we have a math group that's been working for quite a while, and eventually, there are going to be some new math standards that are going to come out to you. In March of 2023, our endorsements for math changed, we have a a secondary generalist and a secondary advanced math. We don't really have a test that fits in that, so that group's been working to find solutions for our six-to-12 generalist math endorsement, to find a test that fits that, so that all goes out through that content standard review team process. And our professional standards board, they reviewed these tests, technical reports, and have made a recommendation to you, which I'll share with you here momentarily. And when we talk about, a little more into the test process, we talk about just qualified candidates. So when we talk about just qualified, that's where that cut score comes from. And bottom line, that individual is the least able, but still qualified candidate to meet that license requirement. And every test, no, there's no perfect test, there's always some type of standard error measure. And a good example of a standard error, error measure, if you think the content test appeal process that we have, basically, for individuals to qualify for a an appeal, they have to be within one standard error measure, which is roughly somewhere between 10, seven to 10 points in order to qualify for that. So that's, you know, seven to 10 points below the cut score to be eligible. But you can also have standard errors of measure that are, that are higher as well. And so that multi-state standard setting panel, once again, it's national content standards that come together. Any test, they review it, they have a process where they review it three times, go through each of the questions, and then determine who, what is a just qualified candidate, and set that cut, cut score for the test. And this is kind of an example of what I was trying to explain about SEMs. So if you see the light color, light blue on the left-hand side, that's an individual that they're just short of the cut score. And that one individual-looking thing, I don't know how I would phrase that, that graphic, that would be basically one standard error measure, but they're not qualified. And then if you look over to the right, where the arrow links up, just qualified candidate, that is somebody that scored one standard error measure higher than that cut score. All right, and these are the specific tests that we're looking to regenerate, so the education of young children test is being replaced with the early childhood education foundational knowledge and content, as is the interdisciplinary early childhood education exam. Those exams, we currently have two early childhood unified endorsements in Kansas. One is birth to K, and the other is birth to grade three. So that's why that test is being utilized to replace two exams. And then we also have the regeneration of our middle school exam, which is 5589. So the motion that the professional standards board recommended to the state board was to accept the cut scores as follows for each of those exams.
Oh, I have a Betty Arnold. Yes, ma'am.
I, I actually have a question. And if you go back a slide, on the replacement test, help me understand what, and I might have missed this, what, what actually generates replacing, I mean, I know you said combining, but is cost ever a factor, or?
Sometimes it can be, so when we, we look at how elementary tests have changed over time, at one point, there were, it was one, one big elementary test you would take. And it would be, it would consist of four, four different sub-tests within that, 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 that main test. And if somebody didn't pass one particular part of that sub-test, they had to retake the, the whole entire test. So that generated a, a big fee. So ETS transitioned, created sub-tests, specific sub-tests that an individual would take, and if they didn't pass that sub-test, then they could focus on retaking that sub-test instead of the whole elementary test. So that's an example, you know, where that comes in. But it could also be, there's a communication aspect and a, a challenge, especially with our early childhood unified program, since there are, there are basically four tests, a couple of them overlap, that it would get candidates confused and people are taking the wrong test, so it was better to have a consolidated test. I mean, that's one of the drivers, and it's also for utilization rate and you know, for a cost effectiveness for ETS, that, yeah, that, that helped them consolidate that exam as well.
And I ask that because I've had a lot of concern expressed over time that cost is really a factor. And many of them, especially if they, they have failed it, then it was not set up initially where they could pay for just that component, they'd have to pay the whole price is what you're.
Yeah, yes.
And so now it can do the component, but are we, is it really a, help me with that.
Yeah, so that's, that's only, you know, a certain, you know, specific test that allows that. So like our early childhood, this early childhood test, it would not. If they didn't pass any part of that test, they've got to take the whole test again. However, ETS is working on some new initiatives, which is something I'll bring to you next year, it's called their STEP program. But it basically will be expanded to do exactly what I just explained to you for every test. So each test has components, a breakout of what's required on there. And when a candidate reads what's required or what's going to be measured on the test, it kind of breaks out how many questions are related to this particular section, related to this section. So ETS will be making a change that for, you know, pretty much a bulk of their test load, that an individual, if they didn't pass one particular area, then that's the only thing that they would have to retest on. And so it does lead to a cheaper, a cheaper cost for the user at the end. So instead of paying $220 for a whole test, it may drop down to you're paying $80 just to retake one specific part that you may not have passed. And those are totally made up figures that I have, so.
I mean, I get it, but.
I get it, I just wondered if that cost is a driver, because that's what I hear a lot of concerns about, just, you know, and, and it, it does add to the stress when they're taking it. That if I don't, you know, I got to come up with this money again, so that was the thing, thank you.
Jim?
Go back to the recommended motion, please.
This is a receive item?
Yeah, I know, I'm not going to make the motion. Does ETS have recommendations for cut scores?
Yes.
And are we consistent with those recommendations?
Yes.
And are we consistent with other states?
Yes, so, but some states do choose to lower the test score, you know, maybe, you know, by one SEM. I'll take, for instance, we'll take Pearson's foundations of, of reading exam. There's other states that we require 240, and that's the recommended cut score for that particular exam. Arkansas and, and I think North Carolina both have like a 230 that they require on that. So each state does have the opportunity to make the determination if they want to lower that. Kansas has been consistent with, we, we want to keep the cut score as it is, because it's, you know, the recommended, and it's not, wouldn't be seen as lowering the requirement for that exam.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay.
And if you're ready for a motion?
This is a receive item.
A receive item, okay.
Next month, we'll pop through it quickly.
So that will be the recommended motion for then. I have a motion for something he's doing, so, okay.
Okay, I think we are good to, to move on.
All right, thank you for your time.
No worries, thank you, Shane, I appreciate it. That was a marathon. Okay, so. Never say never, that's right.
He's self-imposed something that time.
Yeah, he did. Okay, up next, we are going to be talking with our lovely Ms. Natalie Clark about career tech ed. Again, a receive item on the cluster review recommendations.
Thank you, Chair Hopkins, State Board of Education members, Commissioner Watson. We're happy to be here today to share a little bit about career and technical education, state-approved pathways, weighted funding, and enhanced federal funding. With me today, I have our IPS coordinator, Kevin Bronson, who also supports several pathways that you'll hear about. I have our Perkins coordinator, Kathy Camerina. And I have our new, and if you guys want to stand up, that's fine too, Heather Campbell. She supports education and training that includes early childhood and teaching and training, human services and hospitality. And Brian Swaim, he supports health science, biotechnology, and STEM, so we're happy to have them with us today. So we passed out notebooks that we're going to refer to, if you want more information, there's more detail in the notebooks that we passed out prior to the session. But a little bit about career and technical education. So historically, the federal investment in CTE began in the early 1900s, in 1917 with the Smith-Hughes Act. But I really wanted to just touch on the last two decades. So in 2006, the term vocational education was retired. In 2011, tech prep was terminated as far as the language used in career and technical education. And in 2018, the Strengthening Career and Technical Education Act for the 26, 21st century was embarked upon. So what really is different about this is data decision-making. Looking at the state, the occupations in your state, in your region, looking at student performance outcomes. And in 2020, Perkins Five began, and we're going to be talking a little bit about that today, and that's where we're at currently. So the shift from what we thought of as vocational education to now, career and technical education for the 21st century, was vocational education was for a few students, where career and technical education is for all students, thinking about the occupations in Kansas, and a few jobs to all careers and how they may align with students' interests. We think of career and technical education as lifelong learning, being able to apply academic, technical, and employability skills. And vocational education may have been thought of in lieu of academics, but with Perkins Five, it aligns and supports academics. So we're required to report out on the number of students who are CTE concentrators, who are proficient, scoring in levels three and four in reading, math, and science, and we'll share some of that. And finally, thinking about career and technical education, not just high school-focused, but with goal-setting and planning what can be accomplished in high school as far as achieving post-secondary credits. We choose the post-secondary credits earned during high school as a high-quality indicator of pathways. So we keep track of the number of concentrators who are students who have had two or more credits in the same pathway. So on the front of your notebook is the Kansas Career Industry Cluster Pathway Model. And this is the model that aligns with the handbook that we provided to you several months ago. And for the 25-26 school year, there are 15 clusters and 32 different pathways that school districts can apply for. And I wanted to share that the consultants have processed all of the applications from the districts for 25-26. They processed 3,478 pathway applications. So again, that's 32 different pathways, schools may apply for one or more. So that's 96.5% of districts in Kansas that have one or more state-approved pathways. So 276 of our 286 districts have at least one or more totaling for next year, 3,478. And our new model is, we talk about it as a sunflower, but we talk about it as an infinity sunflower because thinking about how CTE in the 21st century focuses on applying academics in their areas of interest. If you try something, you may go on to the next loop and know that you can apply your academics in English and reading, math, and science, and other areas, as well as practicing those employability and learning different technical skills, and how your academics apply in those different settings. So talking a little bit about when we talk about the number of districts that apply for pathways and how it generates the weighted funding, I'm going to talk about it through a high-quality model. So we're members of ACTE, it's a national organization, nonprofit, that supports CTE educators and administrators. And they have come up with a research-based framework that includes 12 elements of high-quality CTE. And those 12 elements are within the application that these districts apply for, for weighted state funding and also federal funding. So talking about when they apply, making sure that it's aligned to standards and that it's integrated in the curriculum. If we talk about a program of study, making sure that schools are required to, if they apply for a business finance pathway, also tell us what academic courses those students are taking in high school and the first two years beyond high school, so that families and students can understand and set goals and know that some of those post-secondary outcomes could be accomplished during high school. and know that some of those post-secondary outcomes could be accomplished during high school, post-secondary credits. So it's standards-aligned and it's integrated. The introductory-level courses do not receive weighted funding, but the technical and application-level courses do. And this is just a sample. I'm using the construction and design pathway. So each district is required to offer one or more introductory-level courses. It's a foundational knowledge, and again, those are not funded. At the technical level, they're learning technical skills that are tied to occupations in the construction and design.
Natalie, can I just interject? Introductory courses are funded within the base state aid.
Yes.
They're not additionally funded for the materials and equipment and things that would be in advance. So don't you think there's no funding? It would have to be taken out of the base state aid that school districts get.
Thank you.
So basically, the introductory courses are considered just basic courses in the school?
Yes, like, like an English one.
Right, right.
Thank you for clarifying. So when I say weighted funding, it's additional .5 funding that the technical-level courses receive and the application level also. So the application-level courses, it's applying what they've learned in a real-world setting, whether that's within the school or working with business and industry. So this is how the handbook we gave you last time shows the different models, and this is one of the 32 different models or pathways that the schools can apply for. I wanted to clarify because sometimes we, we talk about introductory courses do not receive the additional .5 weighted funding, but the technical and application-level courses do. Their Excel and CTE, sometimes we talk about tiered, technical-funded courses. Those are courses students can take in high school that they don't pay tuition for, and they can be mapped in their high school pathways. And they're mapped with a code L. So it's a question we're asked a lot. They don't receive the additional .5 weighted funding because the funding goes directly to the post-secondary institution to provide the reimbursement for the tuition. So it's not, sometimes we're saying, well, is that, is that funded twice? No, it is not because it's coded differently. But those dual-credit courses can be mapped during their school day and their approved pathways. So the statute, KSA 725155, talks about CTE-weighted funding. So the weighted funding, the school district, the pathways that are approved by the state board, there is a formula, and I'm going to show you on the next slide, that shows how you come up with the weighted funding, the .5 weighted funding. Again, they, these pathways must be approved by the consultants. The application window starts November 15 and closes March 1 for the next school year. So we just processed all of the applications for 2025, 2026. And if there are courses where the students are receiving dual credit, again, they may be mapped in the pathway. They do not receive the additional .5 weighted funding because they do receive the state funding through the Excel and CTE or tiered technical funding. So this is a sample where asked a lot how much funding, the .5 weighted funding and the technical and application-level courses is generated by a student who takes a 45-minute class every day. So there's a formula, and you utilize a CTE minutes calculator that fiscal auditing provides and rounding. So based on the base state aid for 25-26, which is 5,615, the additional weighted funding for one student who takes the class every day for 45 minutes is $562. So that's something that we're asked a lot just to understand. And that goes smaller class sizes, talking about the equipment that you would, the students would learn how to use and demonstrate that is trending in industry and professional development for teachers also to keep up on those different skill, knowledge and skills. Talk about, in addition to formative and summative assessments when schools apply for a pathway, they let us know what credentials students have the opportunity to learn, earn. So it could be a certificate. So that's a short-term certificate. It is given by the post-secondary institution, two years or less. It could be a construction certificate for a particular area. It could be an industry-recognized credential that an NCCER in construction is given lots of times for carpentry, masonry, heavy equipment. So part of what they apply for is making the student and families aware of what can be earned during high school as part of those assessment pieces, or those outcomes. They also have four areas that they write three-year improvement goals in. The first one is professional development, and as part of that is, Shane talked a little bit about the endorsement for a CTE professional. For each course that they teach that receives weighted funding, a teaching endorsement or a technical certificate is required. And then those professional development goals for that educator to stay up on business and industry practices in that particular area. They also write three-year improvement goals in regards to engaging instruction. So thinking about how the students are going to be applying academic, technical, and employability skills in the real-world settings based upon their interests, so contextualized in the area of construction or business. Something that they write to also or apply for is to make sure every student, no matter where they're located in Kansas, that there are not barriers for their participation. So making sure all students have opportunity to have work-based learning, participate in a career and technical student organization, have post-secondary credit, and to earn an industry-recognized credential. Component number seven of a high-quality pathway application, they write a three-year goal on how are they going to improve the physical environment? So looking at their equipment, their technologies, to make sure that it reflects business and industry. They're all required to have advisory committees that meet twice a year that come into the classroom and see what they're teaching. The eighth component is that business and community partnership piece, making sure that they're connected with families, the community, post-secondary institution, and business. The ninth piece is that student career development piece. So if we think about making sure that those students are able to plan, to be able to further their education, and looking at their academic and career goals. So making sure that we provide accurate information as far as occupations in Kansas, how those are trending, and making sure that they know about post-secondary educational opportunities, so those multiple entry and exit points. The 10th element, career and technical student organizations. This is where students get to participate in competitive events, community service activities, and practice leadership development. So we support eight nationally-recognized career and technical student organizations. At the close of 2024, 26,032 students were members of these eight organizations. The 11th high-quality component is work-based learning. It's a required component of all of our pathway applications before they're approved. The high school level is the career preparation piece. So making sure within those pathways, students have opportunities to work with business and industry in an internship, a youth-registered apprenticeship. We talk about simulated work-based experiences. So that could be a school bank, a school store, entrepreneurship experience, or service learning. And the 12th and final element that I'm going to share is the data and program improvement piece. So we talked about how where CTE is now, strengthening career and technical education for the 21st century. We look at data to make our decisions. So as part of the pathway review process that we're going to transition into, we look at the Kansas labor market information every year. They're a really great partner because they categorize all their information by our clusters and pathways so that it's easy, easier for educators, families, and students to understand. So we make sure that the pathways are reflective of high-skill, high-demand, high-wage occupations in Kansas. And then the icon, the CTE icon, if you go to Data Central, and if you click on that link, part of what's required is for us to make sure that student outcomes are aligned with academic outcomes. So since Perkins Five began, our CTE concentrators, those are students who have completed two credits in a single pathway, we report on their graduation rate, and we report on their, if they're proficient, so in levels three and four in reading, math, and science. So since 20, the school year 2020, 2021, the concentrators in CTE have been just above the state average in all three of the academic assessments, reading, math, and science. The most recent year, in reading, these students were 1.5% just above the state average. In math, 3.3% above the state average, and science, 3.35. So thinking about vocational education, sometimes we thought about in lieu of academics, but we're required to make sure that the academic components are implemented in our pathways and the students are having those outcomes. So I thought that I would share that and let you know that these are the two data pieces that we look at a lot. And there's others that we look at. We talked about post-secondary credits, so we keep track of the number of credits that students learn. So when, when school districts apply for these pathways, and reflecting on, for 25-26, 276 districts applied for these pathways and went through these high-quality elements, a total of 3,478 pathway applications were approved. So going from the additional weighted state fund, funding, if a school district has one or more approved state pathways, they're eligible to apply for Perkins federal funding that will enhance their pathway. So we received in the school year that we're currently wrapping up, 24-25, 6.5 million, that's an estimate to KSDE. The Perkins funding comes in to the Board of Regents, and they send us half. And I wanted to share the major components of what we do with this. 85% is sent out directly to eligible recipients. So that 4.73 million is directly, schools apply and tell us how they're going to use that to enhance their state-approved pathways. And then they may also apply for reserve grants. That's 834,000. So those are state initiatives. Last year, if educators wanted to provide electronics training to their students, thinking about the precursor of automation and how important that is, they could apply for grants to buy that equipment for their schools and to train their teachers. State leadership, that is where if we have statewide initiative or technical assistance, we can use those funds. We also support our state CTSO state advisors, our eight advisors out of those funds. So the weighted pathways, state funding, and then if they have one or more, they may also apply for Perkins federal funding. And to be eligible for the federal funding, they have to have an approved state pathway. There's a formula that determines how much they may get. It's based upon enrollment and socioeconomic data from the census. If a school district receives at least 15,000, once the formula is calculated, they may apply as a standalone district. If it's less than 15,000, they're to work together and form a consortium. So this last year, we have 75, the applications will close at the end of June, but we've had 75 applicants for Perkins, 46 standalone and 29 consortium. So it's about, up about 23, looking at Kathy, our Perkins coordinator. But it enhances and allows them to keep up with the trends in business and industry. So I hope that helps explain. We talked about what are pathways? What information do they apply and, and go through to receive the weighted, both state and federal funding? So every five years, looking at this handbook, we review our clusters. And we try to make sure that they are in line with the occupations in Kansas. And this past year, the 24-25 school year, we reviewed three clusters. So the starting point was looking at the model in the 25-26 handbook. We reviewed human services, marketing, and transportation distribution logistics. So these changes that are approved will go into effect for the 26-27 school year. And the why behind it is we want to make sure that our course competencies, so those are aligned with standards, and for every course, we have competencies that is part of the pathway application. Teachers say that they will teach and that students will master are reflective of business and industry. And so relevant, rigorous, and reflective. All three cluster review committees, this is their totality of who participated. We had 70 volunteers, 19 from business and industry, one CTSO state advisor, 36 secondary educators, and 14 post-secondary educators in programs that align with those pathways, both at the two- and four-year colleges. Talking about looking at the data to make data-informed decisions. Within your notebook, the first one I'm going to talk about is health and human services. But the Department of Labor comes over, and behind each tab is their report showing the labor market information for each of those clusters and occupations. So they, they provide the information, is this pathway in align with high-skill, high-demand, high-wage occupations? And we receive feedback from business and industry. Department of Commerce has been presenting the last few years on what are those industry sectors most likely to experience economic growth? So what are those trends? In addition, prior, at the beginning of each of the cluster review meetings, the Board of Regents comes to present those aligned programs so that we make sure our pathways are aligned with their programs so that students can receive dual credit. So these are all the different items that the review committees look at before they give recommendations. At that point, the recommendations are posted for public comment for 30 days. So we send out notification that they're posted on our listservs. We put them in KSDE Weekly. And they're still posted if you'd like to go look at those, to see what was posted. Not only do they review the labor market information, but what courses are taught, and they review every competency within each course. So if the competencies were changed, they're also listed. This is the timeline of what we've done and where we're at now. So we just talked about, at the beginning of, the public comments were posted. Our Kansas Advisory Council for Career and Technical Education, of which Board Member Zach is a member, met in April to receive the information that you're also getting today. We met May to look at some more labor market information, and they voted June 4th last week on the recommendations to bring before you today as information. So today, we're asking you to receive the information and let us know what questions you have. And we'd like to ask for you to act on these recommendations in July. So our advisory committee meets quarterly. We have a business and industry representative from each cluster. They serve as the chair of the review committee. If you'd like to see their names in its entirety, they are behind the blue sheet at the front of your three-ring binder. So the first part being who's member, who are members, the voting members of our advisory committee, and then who is each part of the review committee. So they did vote to move forward these to you. And I'm going to speak on the human services review. Human services reviewed three different pathways. The first being family, community, and consumer services pathway. So behind that human services tab, the first tab, and what's projected here is, this is the recommendation that they voted to move forward to you. So within your notebook, you'll see what the pathway looked like prior to the review, following the review, which is what is projected, and then the detail of what was done. So if you have any questions on the detail of this, please let me know. In this particular pathway, looking at the different occupations, they stranded the technical-level courses to reflect comprehensive family and consumer sciences, nutritional services, and mental and behavioral health.
I do have a couple of questions for you. Danny?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am, Chair. Sorry I missed a couple of meetings, but.
and I'm really on this probably more than I need to be, but I'm, I'm not, does every, when you look at every pathway, are you talking about AI also? Because a lot of these pathways are going to change, I can't snap my finger, that fast because of AI, and some of them are, we're not even going to have anymore.
So, we're fortunate that Advanced CTE is helping Kansas. Advanced CTE created the original career cluster model back in two thousand and two. They just updated it in October. So, they have reorganized all of the occupations based on today's occupation list. And then the Department of Labor provided what are the occupations in Kansas. So, we actually meet with them tomorrow. They have crosswalked that, just like what you said, how have things changed and outlined so that they can see if we have any gaps that need to be addressed. So, I hope that helps answer your question.
Maybe, maybe not. Are you good for now?
Let me think on that one.
Okay. Debbie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as these students are getting certifications and such, like, like, let's just go down the electrician line, say. I don't even know if you have that, but let's just say they do. I presume that, that you have partnerships with companies that will give them that kind of apprentice-type experience, am I right?
Yes.
So, is there any compensation for that? And does it go to the school? Does it go to the student? Is it shared, or is it just free labor for the business involved? I would want to know, like, where that is coming in.
So, as part of an approved pathway, each school district must have an advisory board, business and industry in their community or their region actively working in that area. So, the work-based learning opportunities could look different. It could be, in the Kansas City area, I think what we're seeing a lot of is client-based projects. So, perhaps the business poses a question or a problem, and the student within the school solves it and reports back to them. Sometimes that looks like a school-based partnership where, for example, a school bank, the local bank comes into the district and makes sure that the students are following the practices most often followed in business and industry. And sometimes it's that student going out in a work-based learning experience. And we, we looked at the work-based learning, it could include a youth registered apprenticeship. Some of those, it's, of course, that is an earn while you learn, where some of the others are more internship, community service opportunities. But there is a, a cap on the amount of work-based learning, the time that they can be out during the school day, and it has to directly align with that technical course that they've taken. So, does that help answer your question? And with registered apprenticeship, there is funding that can go back to the business?
Yeah, I'm more, I'm more thinking that the business is benefiting from basically you training on the job, somebody who now has a relationship with them, like, like ABC Electric, you know, they have an apprenticeship, and your son or daughter goes out however many hours, three hours in a week, to apprentice. That at some level, you would think that the students would be at least earning a bank account at the school, that they can buy tools when they graduate, or something that is related to that. I, I just, it sounds like, like there would be a compromise for ABC Electric to be getting involved in the school and, oh, by the way, gaining free labor.
So, this is one example. I know that BTI is a company in Western Kansas that, if students have work-based learning experiences there, that they have offered scholarships to send those students to a two-year college to receive that two-year degree as well as tools, and then come back and work for them. So, that, and we think about return on investment, the positive return on investment for a business. The research shows after three years is, you know, a positive return.
Daryl?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Clark, my question just kind of focuses on graduation requirements. So, the intro to family and consumer sciences, it was probably a two-semester course, but now it's being reduced to one. Is there coordination with districts on how that will factor into graduation requirements in their individual district?
Sure. So, these, once approved, if approved, will go into effect in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So, they did, our courses vary from a semester to a year. And sometimes they split courses. I think what they, what they tried to do in the technical level was strand those based upon the occupations. So, they added and arranged some courses, thinking if they, if you get the foundational knowledge, perhaps you will get a little bit of interest into, do you want to go on into nutritional, mental, behavioral health, or comprehensive family? If that helps answer your question?
Natalie, on the, as you know, I've had a little conversation with, we've had some emails early on about the fashion apparel part of that. But I was just looking, so you have the pre-review, and then I'm assuming, because I was just trying to-
Yes, so, if, if you would like for me to go ahead, there's three pathways that we reviewed. The first being human service, the second being early childhood development and services pathway. So, within that tab, you will see the early childhood development, pre-review, and post-review. And post-review are based on the recommendation. There were fewer changes in this particular pathway, but they did want to make educators and students aware that the Child Development Association, or the CDA, is an industry credential. If students take some of these courses, would be an opportunity for students. And the third pathway that was reviewed was the fashion apparel and interior design, commonly known as the FADE pathway. And this, what is projected here and in your binder, is the twenty-five, twenty-six model. So, this is in place for next school year, school districts did apply for those. It was the recommendation made and approved by the advisory committee, that being the Business and Industry Advisory Committee, not to move FADE forward with weighted funding, the additional weighted funding past twenty-five, twenty-six. The reason for this, Department of Labor, their occupations reflected aligned to this pathway did not appear in high demand in Kansas, and high demand, high wage. So, we had an additional meeting to look at that, to make sure it was verified. But there was not thinking about occupations in Kansas that met that high-skill, high-demand, high-wage, aligned to this pathway currently do not. And there was a lack of a post-secondary program alignment. So, we had an additional meeting in May and looked at that. Districts can still offer those courses, as Commissioner Watson said, with the base state aid. But as far as the extra weighting to represent occupations in Kansas, it was recommended and voted on by our advisory committee to not move that forward past twenty-five, twenty-six. We did discuss with the Committee of Volunteers that we would review the labor market every year and have discussions around that.
Right, right. And I know that high demand, high skill, like, there's so many stipulations that go with that. So, you're not saying it's not, that there's not jobs in Kansas, but they're not meeting the criteria that this requires?
That's correct. And we did put those informational pieces in the binder.
Right.
They look at that every year, and the Department of Labor establishes the wage that's considered high wage. And then they have, you know, the projected openings for the year. So, and looking at fashion designers, you know, the projected openings was very small, so it did not meet high demand.
Got you. Thank you.
And that is all I have for human services. So, I'm going to let Kathy Camarina talk about business and the marketing cluster review.
Good morning, I'm Kathy Camarina, I'm the Perkins Coordinator, but I was previously the business consultant. So, that was my position when we went through the marketing and sales review. This is our pathway that we looked at to start with. The bulk of the work in this pathway was just updating competencies to make sure that what students were learning in the classroom would apply to careers in marketing. So, no big changes, there is a summary sheet behind the marketing and sales tab. I guess the major change that was made was there was a lot of overlap in what was being taught in digital marketing and principles of advertising. And they chose to combine that into one course so that students, more students could take that and learn those skills. So, marketing pathway has been updated, and it was a pretty simple process for us.
Yeah, good morning, my name is Kevin Bronson, I was the, I'm the education consultant for the transportation cluster. I'm also the new IPS coordinator for the state. In this cluster, we had two pathways, so look at aviation maintenance and the, what was considered mobile, mobile vehicle maintenance, which is now vehicle maintenance repair. In the aviation maintenance side of things, we did look at the course competencies and made sure that they were up to date and, and relevant to these standards. They removed some of the courses that were pertinent to the manufacturing side of things and focused more on the maintenance. They added an aviation maintenance technician, one, two, three, and four, which is really, it's relevant and aligned to a lot of our post-secondary programs, especially the WSU Tech and the Kansas State University Salina Tech programs. So, those are two lines that we can align students to. And they also updated some of those pieces that pertain to the flight, which is more like relying to the FAA regulations, helps students prepare to take that written exam. But when you talk about maintenance pieces, the regulations of FAA are part of that process because they have to do test flights and they also do a lot of it, have to make sure they're up to date on that. The other pathway we looked at was mobile vehicle maintenance, was like, that was a tongue twister, they just made it to vehicle maintenance and repair. The SIP code was updated and aligned. Some of the major pieces that were added to this, are changed to, we took away an introduction to transportation, but just focused in on those two pieces of, they have to take either the introduction to trade skills or that basic automotive care and information, which is the basic skills. We added in here, we had a cloud course called Diesel Equipment Technology, or Diesel Engine Course, but they revamped it to be a whole diesel-heavy equipment technology program. We have a, we used to, it was really heavily in automotive service, but realized that there's a missing industry here in the state of Kansas with the diesel tech programs because it's a major part of our state of diesel. So, we added Diesel Heavy Equipment Tech one, two, and three, so students or schools could offer a diesel program and align that to some of the pro-secondary programs with the diesel tech classes. We did add in here a CDL entry-level driver training course that can only be offered to seniors pretty much at this, and it has to be pretty much in the spring semester of that. I know some districts are already utilizing this and working cooperatively with, like, Cloud County, Fort Scott, Dodge City. A lot of those students that are close to those programs have that opportunity. It depends on how they work it, but you have to make sure you follow the state and federal regulations and laws to that CDL program because they have to be eighteen to take the test. They can start the training at seventeen, but they can't take the test until they get their driver permit. And they can't do that until they walk in with their eighteenth birthday, so. Schools are working around it and working through their post-secondary programs to offer this to seniors. But now with this in here, at least we're spotlighting it, that it's available to students. And the fact that it's kind of a high demand in the state of Kansas because besides nursing, truck driving is probably the second highest demand in the state of Kansas because without this digital marketing age, transportation, truck driving is probably a big key to our state of Kansas. So, this is the changes to the vehicle maintenance repair pathway. At this time, I think we are at the end, and we are here to take any further questions you may have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess maybe this is for Natalie, I'm not sure, because she mentioned there is a meeting tomorrow, you said, so you'll get an update from, on, on some statistics, on data, on, on jobs, correct? There's another meeting tomorrow?
Yes.
And then you, the, the other slide, they talked about how there just isn't a demand, at least in Kansas, for some of these things. So, I'm curious, if I, I've gone through and I've got, received the certificate, now what happens to my certificate? Is it, is it no longer valid, or I've just experienced, I've, I've gone through an experience, I've gone through some education on that, so I could maybe apply that? I guess I'm concerned about those students that, you know, thought that they were going down a pathway and then that got eliminated or changed, now is that certificate, what happens to that certificate?
So, when students go through a pathway, there's several things that they could take with them. They're applying their academic skills on something they're interested in. So, you know, making sure that the learning is continuing in those areas of reading, math, and science, and understanding contextually what that looks like in the real-world setting. Certainly demonstrating employability skills. I think that in looking at FADE, some of the things we looked at, and we talked about this yesterday, some of the students go on to Johnson County, and it's a marketing program. So, if you think about fashion apparel and interior design, and how our jobs change because of advances in technology, perhaps it is more designing digitally, automated production. You see interior design courses and architecture and construction. Our former chair of our advisory committee hires interior designers to help with their 3D construction and design projects when building schools, because the, so I think that understanding that that lifelong learning piece, as our occupation changes, multiple entry and exit points, and where that may go. So, I don't know if that helps thinking about, you know, that there's opportunities, but perhaps they're in different occupations because of how things have transitioned across time.
I'm just thinking about some, some classes that students might take academically in high school where they're learning about the anatomy of the body, they're learning in biology, they're learning in sciences, and that may spark them to go, wow, there's a lot of things going on with the human body. I'm going to go into this pathway, I'm passionate about it. But they're doing it not, like, not just taking blood pressure on somebody, I've got that skill to take blood pressure, knowing the dynamics of the human body and what, what that blood pressure means when you're taking it. I mean, you, you could apply so much with academics and education and some of these strong classes that we could be taking with, with, again, anatomy, more sciences, more, more biology and things like that, rather than just going and getting, like, a, like you say, world, world, an experience. You would be, you would be passionate about that because you've done some studying and you've, and you've got some knowledge on that. You're passionate, so it doesn't matter if there's a certificate, or if there, if, if that goes away or eliminated, you're still on that drive because your passion, that's your pursuit of happiness, that's your, that's your passion. So, you wouldn't be let down, but, well, I mean, some, some of this, I feel like I'd be let down if I were like, I went through this and now, there should be a passion driven from that student based on maybe, maybe some of the classes that they're taking in school that would drive them to more than just a skill. Because you could take, you know, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to list the, all the names of the companies that use different things, or the accounting, but, because I don't want to name this out loud and publicly. But you could go and think, oh, I'm going to have this credential in this specific program, but then the company I go to, they don't even use that program. They, they're going to have to retrain you because of the new skill. So, you can always learn a new skill, you're always going to learn that. But it's the knowledge and the academics that are going to be able to be applied all across the board, any skill that you learn later in life.
So, thank you for your comment. As far as two things I wanted to share. So, we talked about the credentials and that we meet every year. So, we meet with Department of Labor and the Board of Regents. And for each post-secondary certificate program, every year, they have to make sure that it meets high-skill, high-wage, and demand. And then in current job postings, they're saying that that certificate degree credential is essential for, so it's post, it's posted in their job postings. So, we have lightcast, which shows in Kansas. We can search for a certain credential and see how many Kansas companies are asking for this and who are they? So, we try to keep up on that every year. And research shows that if a student accomplishes completing nine post-secondary credits in high school, high-quality work-based learning, or an industry-recognized credential, their chances of post-secondary success is much greater. So, I know that with lifelong learning, things change, but if they're able to accomplish it in high school, to be able to go on and have that step up before they leave, their likelihood of success is enhanced.
So, some of these certifications, if you're, like, for example, health, if a student's going through health, we might talk about CPR. And some of those are lifelong skills where I can take a CPR. where I can take a CPR, you know, or first aid. That might be the first cert that a student gets. And that's not going to go away. That's helpful. That's something that they're going to be lifelong deal. And some of these certs are more at the senior level. And so, if they're passionate, that's why when we talk about individual plans, certainly the passionate thing at the middle school and getting them exposed to things early, or even at the freshman level, some of those certs don't come into play until later down the road. So, the passion is there. We want to see where they're at, what courses they take. They always have an opportunity to explore those passions. So, the small certs are there, but not, some of them, each pathway is different. So, it depends on what the pathway is and what certs are available.
Part of, there's all kinds of dilemmas that Natalie's team faces with this, but let me just point out one. So, I'm a teacher of X. I teach auto mechanics, or I teach health, or I teach fashion merchandising, whatever I teach. And industry, to your AI comment, but let's go broader. Industry then comes in and says, there just aren't, the trending is that there's not jobs in this field, it's moving to this field. And the, the discord comes with, well, but I like this field. I think it is valuable. And I think, and there's good value to whatever that is. But industry is telling Natalie's team, yes, but the job market is shrinking in this area. And Kevin talked about that. Diesel is expanding. And, well, but I don't like diesel. So, we always have this tension between what is and what's being recommended, what should be. Because you're always dropping something off and you're always adding something. And then it's a, you know, that's given a year in advance so that people can make the change. So, and the funding somewhat dictates that we have to go through that cycle. Or the additional funding for vocational and technical courses are not provided if we don't adhere to that. So, you hear, you rarely hear from the business and industry. I mean, I shouldn't say that. I mean, a little bit. You hear more from teachers, right, about it. And so, I just wanted you to put that in perspective that when she's talking about Perkins funding or Point Five funding, the stipulations in that funding dictates the process a lot by which then they have to operate and get feedback on.
Michelle? No? Oh, must not have removed it before. Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you so much for going through that so well. That gives us a lot of information and we'll see you next month finalized. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I think so too. Okay. Hello. So, we're going to go to Evaluation Review Committee Recommendations for Higher Ed Accreditation and Program Approvals. And Shane was letting the cat out of the bag all the way through, but I was excited about this part.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, members of the board, thank you very much for letting me come back before you. Yesterday, you acted on the Evaluation Review Committee's recommendations from April. And today, I have as a receive item for you their recommendations from May. Just a reminder, the Evaluation Review Committee is a practitioner-staffed committee of four classroom teachers, four classroom educators, four P-12 administrators, four higher ed administrators, and one at-large individual. And first, I have a higher ed accreditation for you. I don't bring those, you don't see those as often. So, just a reminder of that process. It is very similar to the program review process. The College of Education, the Department of Education, the School of Education, whatever they call themselves, so we tend to refer to them as the unit or the educator preparation provider, the EPP. Got to love an acronym. They write a self-study about how they feel they are meeting those accreditation standards. A review team reviews that and provides a formative report. This is what we understand, this is what we don't understand. The EPP provides an addendum, more information answering those questions. The review team then has a virtual visit, so everybody is sitting at their own kitchen table or desk, but meeting with faculty and leadership of the university, students, P-12 folks, community members. And then the team writes another report. The EPP gets a chance to reply to that. It then goes to that Evaluation Review Committee. They review all the materials that have accumulated, all the reports that have accumulated. They make an initial recommendation. If the university says, you still don't understand this one part, they can request a hearing. I bring that final Evaluation Review Committee recommendation to you all. And it could be recommended for full accreditation for seven years, for accreditation with stipulation, so we have some concern, for two years during which the stipulation is resolved, for probationary accreditation for two years, a graver concern to be resolved in two years or not accredited. Just a reminder what the higher ed accreditation standards are. The first standard is that that education department at the college makes sure all of their licensed paths fully address the content and the pedagogy for each of those licensed areas. The second standard is their clinical partnerships in practice, that they have memoranda of understanding with the P-12 schools that they work with, and that those schools have direct impact or input on program design. Hey, I think you're, you need to make sure to include this. We need to structure the practicum experience such and such way. So, that that is a very open collaborative effort. Standard three is candidate quality recruitment and selectivity. So, how is the education unit recruiting folks? Are they recruiting folks from their immediate area? Are they reaching out to, to other areas of the state that have high numbers of vacancies? Are they recruiting to high vacancy licensed areas? Once they recruit somebody, do they monitor them all the way through the program? You know, once you're in, we're not just going to let you go and hope you show up at the end. You know, how are they monitoring candidates through every key assessment and checking in with them and working with them if anybody is struggling? Standard four is the program's impact on the P-12 learner. So, how do we know that folks that complete this program and go get a license have a positive impact on their P-12 classroom students? And then standard five kind of encompasses it all, the, the provider's quality, continuous improvement, and capacity. And then initial programs, meaning something that you could enroll in as your first ever foray into education. An advanced program is something that requires you to have a previous license. So, you're picking up a school specialist or a leadership license. Most often, special ed is done as that advanced program. But as Shane was hinting, we've been looking at the, the regulations really closely. And, and maybe that could be your first foray into education. But that comes later. I have a couple of slides first. Just a reminder also, there are two kinds of concerns that the accreditation team might document. The area for improvement is the, it's a concern, but it's a lesser concern. So, a weakness that is not generally severe enough to lead to the standard being not met and needs to be addressed during the accreditation cycle and reported on annually in their annual report. The more severe concern is called the stipulation. So, that is when there is a grave concern and, and maybe it means the standard is not met, maybe the standard is met, but it's, it's kind of creaky. So, in that case, the recommendation is typically for that accreditation with stipulation that was on the flow chart. And that does need to be resolved in two years to retain accreditation. So, for Tabor College, the ERC is recommending full accreditation for the full seven-year cycle. They do recommend that all five of the standards are met. Tabor does not offer advanced programs. They only offer initial. So, we've only got the initial column there. Looking at their standards, the review team did not have any areas for improvement for standards one, two, three, and five. And they had no stipulations for any of the standards. So, they did have one or more areas of improvement for standard four, which is that program impact. It's a lot of words on the screen. And usually, it's easier to skip to the rationale. So, looking at component 4.1, while the EPP collects data through employer satisfaction surveys, focus groups, and other qualitative measures, the evidence is limited in scope, consistency, and comparability. The provided data primarily reflects perceptions of the completer, the alumni, the, you know, the teacher's contribution to their student growth, rather than objective measures of that classroom learning outcomes. Additionally, the EPP only provided one cycle of data instead of the required three. And I will say, universities do not have access to state testing data. They are not allowed to use any of that. So, typically, what they will do to collect that direct measure of a teacher's impact is they might do focus groups with their alumni, they might do case studies with their alumni, they might do a, a pre-post exercise. Hey, all of our math teachers, do this project in your class, you know, do a pre-test and then do the project and do a post-test. And it's just data for our college to say, look, our math teachers have a positive impact. Any of the content areas could do that. There was a second area for improvement. So, the EPP provides minimal evidence across three data cycles of completer satisfaction. Again, skipping to the details, they provided completer satisfaction data from surveys, but the, the data that the education department got from the alumni office that sends the surveys was kind of hard to follow. And there appeared to be some duplication. So, despite getting a corrected data file during the review period, there were still some duplications. The review team just wasn't sure how many years were represented. And I did miss the, the, for 4.1, the review team recommending that there be a structured plan for data collection and analysis. And then for 4.3, just trying to make sure that how many issuances of the survey happened is better tracked over time.
Yep. Can we go now? You want me to wait? Real quick, even though I've been sitting here listening to this for a long time, I'm just curious, is there a rubric that the review team uses? Because it seems to me that if you only have one cycle of data and three are required, that would pop on a rubric and say, no, you're not there yet?
There is not a rubric. There is guidance, but it, it all has to be very flexible because each college does it differently. So, yeah, the, the requirement is three cycles of data. Typically, if there is any data for a component, then it would be considered an area for improvement as opposed to a stipulation. The more severe stipulation is when there has not been an effort made to, to collect data. Sometimes you have an assessment and you think it's going to be great and you give it, and that did not measure what we wanted it to measure. And so, then you go back and you make a new thing.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And so, if I'm understanding correctly, Tabor, two years ago, started a teacher prep program.
Oh, no, no. They, they've been going for many, many years.
Okay. I don't know what I was missing in here. So, this is just a full continuation.
This is a full continuation. Yep. Yep. So, their next accreditation, the ERC is recommending would be in spring of 2032. There were no leftover concerns from the last review. So, that is the accreditation recommendation for you. Then I have program review recommendations. You've seen this flow chart several times, but it's very similar. Each licensed program writes up how they feel they are addressing those licensed area standards. They map out how the key assessments they use fully meet those standards. A review team of experts looks at that material. They meet, they make a recommendation to the, or an initial report, which goes back to the program. We see how you're meeting the standard. Maybe we don't see how this key assessment that you picked out works, or maybe we can't find all the parts of the standard. The university then replies with a rejoinder response. And the team goes back, looks at their report, and updates it based on that response. That then goes to the Evaluation Review Committee. They review everything again. They make an initial recommendation. The university can say, yep, we agree with that. Or they can say, you don't understand. And they can request a hearing. Once that Evaluation Review Committee recommendation is final, I bring it to you all. A program, if it's a continuing program, it's been going, it can be renewed for a full seven-year cycle. If it is new, and here we have unfortunate same word, different meaning, if it is a new program, it can be approved with stipulation. It's not a grave concern stipulation. It's a, you're going from blueprint to actually doing it. We want to check in in two years and make sure everything is going okay. There's no documented concern with that stipulation, or not approved, which I try to avoid. So, I have for you continuing programs from Emporia State University, several, several screens worth, all looking to be renewed. Biology, early childhood unified, birth to grade three, earth and space science, English Language Arts for 5.8, high incidence special ed, history, government, social studies for grades six to 12, math for grades five to eight, math for grades six to 12, physics, reading specialist, restricted, school counselor, and school psychologist, and middle-level science, all being recommended with all standards met, no areas of concern, science of reading for those science of reading identified licensed areas. So, I'll have that for you next month. Fort Hayes' proposed new program, which we've been talking about and foreshadowing all morning, has a new program that they want to start offering that would be an innovative, high and low incident special ed offered at the undergraduate level. I mentioned in accreditation, special ed is typically an advanced program that you take after some other program. But we have folks that say, well, I don't want to measure it, major in that other thing. I want to major in special ed. I want to go directly into that field. And there hasn't been really a way to do that. So, and also, in consulting with our special education experts, oftentimes, you have high incidence and low incidence needs in one classroom. So, having just one license and not the other means you, you know, you might be struggling in some areas. So, Fort Hayes has proposed offering a combined program at the initial level. It was reviewed against both sets of those standards and against the, the science of reading criteria. The review team does recommend that all standards are met across all of those standards, there was a lot of standards, with no areas for improvement. So, we'll have that for you next time. It would be new program approved, approved with stipulation is the recommendation, meaning they will need to let us know when they start admitting candidates. And then after two semesters of operation, they file a progress report, which goes to the Evaluation Review Committee and then comes to you all.
Wonderful. And I am, I spent a couple of hours in a coffee shop, mind you, so it was a great couple of hours, but talking with Jerry Brooks, right, about, because she's the one that wrote this for Fort Hayes. And, I mean, I was just so impressed with the work that she obviously really hammered out hard. I mean, she, I got it. Like, this is the whole deal. And just really helped me understand the blending of it all. And it makes perfect sense to me. And it is a great hope on Fort Hayes' part that other universities, colleges of education will take a hold of the idea. Beryl, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just my curiosity, will this program be onsite or virtual or both?
I believe it is primarily virtual.
Okay. Madam Chair, may I, I'll be cognizant of your time. So, as far as this program, it's nested really well to tie into our Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Program. And, you know, based on that component of related technical instruction, it has to be provided in a manner that's conducive for someone to work full-time. So, mainly, it'll be virtual, but they may also offer it for, you know, on-ground opportunity as well. But, you know, this program is designed and will be fit into the Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Program as we have entered different program as we have entered different candidates from interlocals and other special education teachers. There's been a need of a direct entry route. Right now, that need is being met by an out-of-state university that offers a direct entry for high-incidence special education. We have no offering in the state, and there is no offering for low incidence. A lot of our special ed directors wanted an option for low incidence as well, and this covers both of those needs. And just one little piece of context, and I'll be quiet. So over the years, when we talk about how special education has been provided or trained in Kansas, at some point, though it's not a requirement, I guarantee you, if you ask a lay individual, what does it take to become a special education teacher? Somebody's going to tell you, oh, I got to get a master's degree in special education. There's no graduate degree requirement for that. It's been considered an added endorsement, but there are ways, and we've been processing licenses from people from out-of-state for years that completed direct entry programs. So this is a big deal, and changing that and that misconception that special education has to be a master's degree program. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. No, I am, I'm excited about this, too. And I know Fort Hayes is excited to
Very much.
Be the forefront of all of that, I think, so.
In addition to Fort Hayes' new program, I have three of their, previously new, they want to be considered continuing. So this is recommendation to take off that new program stipulation. They've been in operation for two years. The ERC recommends they go on to continuing program approval cycle. So that would be for their innovative elementary LERP, that is that limited elementary residency working in the school district, their low-incidence program, and an innovative low-incidence that uses that limited residency license. So again, working in the school district while pursuing that. For Haskell Indian Nations University, their elementary program is a continuing program, and the ERC does recommend that it be renewed for the full approval cycle. They did use the new elementary standards that came out this past spring, so science of reading is embedded in those standards. So I just have it documented a little differently, how that was checked. And then Kansas State University also has a new program that has completed that first couple of years and wants to become continuing. So the evaluation review committee does recommend that K-State's restricted program lose that new program stipulation and be made continuing. Any questions on those? I would like to beg one more minute of your time, because none of these reviews happen without the people that do it. And across the academic year, I had at least 219 individuals, and I realized on the next page, I have Jerry Brooks listed twice, because she is involved actually in all the different levels of these things. So maybe it's 218 individuals. 350 different activities. If a committee meets four times, it's just that committee of 10 people. But, you know, a training of 40 people, that's 40 entries. So 350 different things that 218 people did, six accreditations, 33 program reviews, five content area standards revisions worked, most still ongoing, four different trainings. So I have for you A through B. There's Jerry twice. B through E. E through H. H through L. L through O. O through S. S through Z.
And we give a heartfelt thank you to each and every one of them, and to you and all that that takes, because, you know, we hear that little bit on the other end, but there's so much work involved. And it's so important that our higher ed programs are meeting the standards that we need for our pre-service teachers. So please extend.
Absolutely.
And I would thank them heartily. Thank you. Appreciate that. So thank you for doing that.
Absolutely. We'll see you next month.
Okay, board, we will take a break. Thank you for hanging in there. I know it's gone long, but the discussions are so important. I just, I really appreciate that. So let's take a 10-minute back at 12:40. But we get food on the other, well, after the federal issue, sorry. We get food after the federal issues.
Frank is not providing food.
Frank is not. Sorry, I missed a little thing there. So after that, we'll take 10 minutes. We're all getting back in our seats here. We have been provided a lovely lunch, so please don't mind us while you're doing your thing. We promised to pay attention, but we are going to dig into this lovely thing you have given us, so thank you so much. And so Kelly, sorry? Say your last name.
Chaney.
Chaney, why am I, all of a sudden, I couldn't even hear. Kelly Chaney is going to talk with us about summer meals and just the, I'm sure just the overall lunch program, right? And what we're seeing, so please take it away while we enjoy the, what you've provided for us. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely, yes. Please enjoy the lunch meal. The lunch meal was catered by the USD 437 School Food Service Department, and this is a summer food service program reimbursable meal that they provide at the Pauline South Intermediate Center. So, well, good afternoon, Chair Hopkins, board members. In March, I had the opportunity to provide a very brief overview of the summer food service program. So I'm really pleased today to be able to showcase some of our summer food service program operators that have joined us today. The opportunity today is very timely because the summer food service program is in full swing across the state. And hearing from our program operators how they administer the program at the local level, I think will help you all acquire a deeper understanding of the summer food service program and the challenges, and just how unique it is as one of the three federal child nutrition programs that our team administers. A favorite part of my job at Child Nutrition and Wellness is the opportunity to educate others about child nutrition programs. And occasionally, I'm asked, well, why does Kansas State Department of Education care about providing access to nourishing meals to kids during the summer? And my response is simple, because it's the right thing to do for all Kansas kids, whether those kids are attending a brick-and-mortar school building, attending a virtual school, or attending a homeschool. Because we know that healthy students cannot learn, nor can they truly realize the amazing potential that awaits them. And the summer food service program connects children with the nutrition that they need during the summer so that when they start back to school in the fall, they are ready to learn. Providing children with access to nutritious food beyond the school year has health, education, and economic benefits. In the short term, summer meals can help mitigate summer weight gain. Many children from food insecure households turn to cheap, calorie-dense foods with little nutritional value. As a result, food insecure children may gain weight two to three times faster during the summer than during the school year. And the summer food service program can help diminish cognitive decline and slow down the summer slide by providing access to nourishing meals and academic enrichment activities. And you'll hear a little bit more about some of the academic enrichment activities that we have at some of our sites. So in the long term, you could say that the summer food service program may even help increase high school graduation rates. And now I'm going to put on my registered dietitian hat. Food insecurity makes children more susceptible to chronic diseases like iron deficiency anemia, asthma, type 2 diabetes, and heart disease. And all of these chronic diseases can have a major impact on their quality of life and well-being in childhood, and then carry over into adulthood. Summer meal service sites are located in low-income areas, and site eligibility is based on census data or school-free and reduced-priced eligibility data. Any child attending a summer meal service site operated in an area-eligible location may receive a nutritious meal at no cost. And program operators may operate either a congregate meal service site where the children stay on-site to eat the meal, or a non-congregate meal service site where the children can take the meal home with them. The non-congregate meal service option is only available for those meal service sites that are located in rural designated areas. Meal service sites operating congregate meal services offer a variety of educational enrichment activities such as nutrition education, ag education, gardening, healthy eating, area businesses, and civic organizations. A wonderful illustration of educational enrichment activities and the incorporation of local foods is the Cooks and Books Program. This is a collaboration between USD three twenty Wamigo and the Wamigo Public Library. The Cooks and Books Program brings nutrition education and literacy to children in grades K through twelve. This six-week program provides a toolkit for each family with needed equipment and weekly take-and-make bags containing local ingredients to make healthy snacks. And Laura Fells, USD three twenty Food Service Director, shown on this slide, is demonstrating the rainbow salad recipe in a YouTube video. They have their own YouTube channel. All right, so during the school year, schools have a captive audience. And during the summer, in many communities, there isn't a school, or children may lack transportation to a, a school summer meal service site. Therefore, schools aren't always an option to serve as summer meal sites. And so community partners step up to work with schools to ensure that children have access to summer meals. Great things are happening across the state at meal service sites located at libraries and parks, swimming pools, schools, churches, trailer parks, housing developments, and YMCA's and Boys and Girls Clubs. And for summer twenty twenty five, we have currently approved one hundred and fifty program operators, or we call them sponsors, to operate five hundred and twenty-eight meal service sites across eighty counties in Kansas. And of those five hundred and twenty-eight meal service sites, two hundred and thirty-five of them are located or operated at sites that are not schools. So they are operated at churches, parks, community centers, sports complexes, all of these sites in area-eligible locations. And as you can see from that table, there is a disparity between the number of meals served during the school year. Our average daily participation is over two point nine million meals, whereas during the summer, it is eighty-one thousand. So there certainly are opportunities that exist to reach more children in the summer food service program. So the summer food service program is definitely not a one-size-fits-all model, and that in itself presents some very, very unique challenges. And in many communities, there isn't a school marquee or school property to hang signs and banners advertising summer meal programs. This is where the collective efforts of Kansas State Department of Education, our schools, and our community partners step up, and it's imperative for them to maximize the reach to potential partners, or excuse me, potential participants. Families struggling to make ends meet financially are more likely to be heavy users of free media such as TV and radio. And not all households rely on social media or have access to school communications. On the other hand, we have households that primarily use cell phones and use social media platforms to receive information. Reaching such diverse populations across the state is very challenging, as you can imagine. And with that being said, it's now time to turn it over to the true stars of our show today, our program operators, to hear about their programs and how they are providing access to summer meals in their communities. And so with us today, we have got Tracy Johnson from USD four five seven. She is the Food Service Director. She's joining us virtually. We have Chad Higdon, CEO of Second Harvest Community Food Bank, St. Joseph, Missouri. And Chad is here with us in person. And then we have Debbie Makings, Larned United Methodist Church. She's the Director of that program. And then in person, we have Kendra Davila. She is the Director of Peace Connections in Newton. And it looks like our slides got a little out of order, so we're actually going to pivot. And you're going to hear from Tracy Johnson first. So Tracy, please share with us what you are doing in the Garden City community all the way out in western Kansas.
All right, we are out here in Finney County, and all you know, it is very sparse. We have a lot of ground to cover. Just a little background, I started in nineteen ninety-eight, and we did serve at the schools. That's the only sites that we've served at the schools. But in two thousand and two, we decided we needed to do something to connect with the rural community. So we purchased, well, we actually got donated a retired school bus, and we called it Kids Meals on Wheels, and it ran up until COVID. So when we're looking at sites to select, we want to pick a site that has planned activities because we want a captive audience. So the Health Department, we've partnered with the Health Department. Kids are coming in for immunizations, physicals. The swimming pool, everybody likes to swim, so we hit the swimming pool about fifteen minutes before the actual swimming pool opens. And the library, we partner with the library on the weekends because we are unable to get, serve during the weekends, so the library does that for us. Locations, we have a lot of trailer parks, low-income housing areas outside the city limits, and these kiddos cannot walk or have access to the meals unless we take it to them. So we hit a lot of trailer parks. The other thing as far as the location is the safety. We want to make sure the kids have a, a safe place to eat. So we go out and visit the sites every year to make sure we know where we're parking, and the kids are safe. And the other thing that we do, I feel really well in Garden City, is we have a lot of community partners. We partner with the Garden City Rec, like I said, the library and the Health Department. In the past, we've partnered with the Salvation Army, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and a lot of other community partners. This is our schedule for this year. You can see that we have the mobile grab-and-gos, and we just scheduled them in June. And then next week, we'll evaluate whether, what sites we want to continue on in July. The other ones are the grab-and-go. We have the Finney County Health, this is our, this is an old one, but this is our grab-and-go sites. And then at the bottom, we have our school sites. As you see, we don't have a lot of school sites. We try to pick the ones that have summer school, and then we all, and then we pick horsegood middle school because it's centrally located, and we run that program all the way through the end of July, first of August. And this is the city of Garden City, and I don't know if you guys can see it, but the black X's are the places where the buses are, are Suburbans. We have little buses, we have Suburbans. They load up, we have four routes, and they hit, they hit those black X's. So you can see we're trying to hit outside of the town. On, in the middle of the town, we have circles where we do have the open sites, where the kids can, we're having summer schools, summer activities. And in the middle, number seven is Horsegood, which is the central located space. So that's kind of overviews our sites. Participation, last year, we fed a total of twenty-one thousand four hundred and seven breakfasts and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven. If you look at the statistics on the school sites, it was, for breakfast, it's about fifty-five percent of the kids we served, and non-school sites, it was fifty-three. But if you go down to lunch, our non-school sites and our school sites are about the same.
All right, thank you, Tracy. So now we will hear from Chad from Second Harvest Community Food Bank.
Thank you, Kelly. I'm Chad Higdon, traveled from St. Joseph for Feeding America Food Bank, and we serve Atchison, Brown, and Donovan Counties in Kansas, as well as fifteen Missouri counties. But this has been a tremendous partnership for us. I think, Kelly, I was going to ask, I think we've probably been ten years in partnership on this program, so this is really something that we see is, is very beneficial and valuable, especially with, for the, for the kids and the partnerships we've created. So our, it, it really is, we, we have hot meal sites, and we have cold sack lunch-type sites. And, and it's really kind of what, what is most convenient for those locations. We're operating in some city parks, you know, that it's, it's easier to prepare the meals off-site and then bring him, then bring them in and make sure the temperatures are, are monitored and the food safety requirements are handled appropriately. But then we're also operating hot meal sites at some of these locations. In total, we have eight locations in Kansas where we have, I mean, they really range. We, we're working in two sites in Hiawatha, a couple sites in Horton, White Cloud, Highland, Elwood, and Wathena, and some of those are city parks. Some of those are on the reservations with the Boys and Girls Club that we're operating. But last year, in total, we served nearly twelve thousand meals. And between our, you know, we're, we're operating the program as well in, in Missouri, but over a fifth of our total lunches were served between our two Kansas counties that are participating in the program. There's even sites, as we look at, you know, I was, I was in Highland at their site this week, and they've got a tremendous set of church, community building that they're using. And, and really, these are very volunteer-heavy programs, so it really helps us keep the costs down and operate the programs very efficiently. But you have kids running up to these volunteers and hugging them and just loving on them, and they're doing some great things really to engage with the children through these programs. But, but they're looking at maybe becoming a central kitchen for very rural sites. So you look at, you know, places like Denton, or Troy, or Severance, they're looking at, can they actually reach kids that are in those very, very rural communities and provide access through transportation and additional volunteers? So here's our Brown County site. You can see we're partnering at the Sheriff's Department, at libraries, and then on the reservation in Kickapoo. Really, most of these are averaging twenty to fifty meals a day, and then as high as a hundred and twenty meals a day up at the Sheriff's Department. So really, even that is giving a great opportunity for the Sheriff's Department to, to partner with the local community and build relationships. Donovan County at the Hiow, Hiow, or Highland Christian Church, the Wathena, Nelwood City Parks, and the, and the Iowa Tribe, again, serving twenty-five to fifty to sixty meals every, every day for some of these kids. And, you know, I think just other things to hit on, it, it really, you know, you're just seeing the kids that are so appreciative and so thankful, and, and the park might be right next to their home, and they're just running over and looking forward to that meal and working with the volunteers. And we're just so thankful for this partnership and the opportunity to really bring meals to kids during the summer when, when, you know, families are trying to keep jobs and don't have a place for kids to go, and grandparents are watching them. It really just provides a lot of convenience and opportunity, and it's, it's an honor for us to be a partner in that. So, thank you. Oh, and I'm sorry, I'm turning it over to Debbie. So I'd thank Debbie, you're up next.
All right, my name is Debbie Makings, and I actually teach preschool for USD four nine five in Larned. And for the past ten years, I have been blessed to run our summer food program here at the Larned Methodist Church. We have three sites in Larned, the one at the church here, and then we have one at a daycare. And then we also have one at our summer school. At the three sites, we serve between two hundred and fifty and three hundred kids a day, which is huge in our community, because our community only has about thirty-five hundred people. So when you think about that, we reach a large portion of our kiddos in our community. The daycare and the summer school, they are both congregate sites, so the kids eat them there. We do serve breakfast and lunch at those sites. The church is a grab-and-go, so the kiddos can grab it and take it, or parents can pick that up if that is more convenient. We are a open site at the church, so anyone in our community can get that. You don't have to qualify. We qualify because we have about sixty percent of our kiddos receive free and reduced lunches through the school. So that is how we qualify for that. So anyone can come and pick that up. Over the years, over the past ten years, we've had lots and lots of positive things. We've had National Honor Society kids come, volunteer to get their hours. We've had other civic organizations that volunteer to help us serve, cook, prepare, clean up, just interact with the kids. They'll give up their lunch hour to do that, just to be a positive role model in the kids in our communities, in our community's life. The county commissioners have provided ice cream more than once, so they'll come over and give the kids an extra special treat when they pick up their meal, and they love that. Our local Sheriff's Department, they have done the Adena Kid fingerprint for several years. So then parents have that, if heaven forbid they would ever need that, they would have those fingerprints available. And that is a great opportunity for kids to interact with law enforcement in a positive way. My husband is a sheriff's deputy, he comes every day and helps serve those meals as well. I would say our biggest challenge is reaching all the kids, even though we do reach a large percentage. Our biggest challenge is getting to everyone and everyone realizing that it is, summer food program is for everyone. You know, you don't have to meet any qualifications. We do that as a community, we meet that because of our number of free and reduced lunches. So that is something that we still need to continue here to work on and try to let everyone know that if you're age one to eighteen, you can come get a meal and use that. And finally, I just want to share that I feel strongly that we need to continue to make people aware of the number of children that are food insecure. And I think oftentimes, we think that it is just those kids. And we don't realize that sometimes we don't know who those kids are. We make that assumption, and we don't know who they are. And because of the summer food program, those kids whose families might be struggling, those kids can come and not be singled out, and that is amazing. So any kiddo can come, if they're, if they can come, maybe because they're food insecure, or maybe they're home alone, and they just are looking for a positive interaction with some adults. Or maybe a parent is working, and they stop by and grab those meals over their noon hour. So to help with time for the cook, to help them not have to cook meals for their kiddo. Or maybe the kids are heading from, you know, one summer event to another. We see stay-at-home moms that are just wanting it out, just an opportunity to get out and see someone or, and not have to cook. There's hundreds of reasons that the kids come to the summer food program. And I think the biggest one is that we're feeding them. So thank you for your time.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you so much for having us this afternoon. It's a real honor to be here in your presence. My name is Kendra Davila, and I am the Director of a small nonprofit located in Harvey County. It is Peace Connections, and we run several different relationship-based poverty reduction programs in our community. I have the pleasure of coordinating our Summer Enrichment Activities for Kids program, SEEK, which falls under the summer food service umbrella. This means that we are able to serve lunches free of charge to anyone ages one to eighteen in our community. And we do this all in a congregate setting. The mission of the SEEK program is to put more meals into the hands of kids while simultaneously giving, getting them connected to community resources. Each meal service day throughout the summer is paired with an activity led by an area nonprofit business, church, volunteer, or organization. That's, this gets kids outside, this gets kids outside, engaged in fun activities, learning about their community, and creates building blocks for lifelong connections. Examples of this include the public library hosting a story hour, 4H and Scouts sharing about their program opportunities, or the Humane Society bringing puppies and sharing with their kids how to care for a pet. So basic building blocks of like how to be a human in the world. We sometimes refer to this program as a two-month-long celebration of community, as we not only increase access to meals when food may be less secure in the summer months, but highlight and celebrate the good that is already happening in our community. Each program year engages at least sixty community volunteers, building off of what Debbie said, people interested, caring about those kids, and helping make longer-term connections. Our program is offered in two locations, one being a park and the other in a church building. These non-traditional settings allow us to meet families where they are at and increase accessibility. Kids who would otherwise stay at home in the summer while their parents may be working get to get outside and play with their friends, and they have fun, which reduces summer learning loss. The summer food service program helps our community thrive by addressing The Summer Food Service Program helps our community thrive by addressing food access issues as one in five kids in our community face food insecurity. Last summer, we served 2,500 meals, which eases grocery bills for families and helps kids navigate their community. In its entirety, this is a creative public-private partnership. For the meal, local restaurants provide the man course, sharing a gooey burrito from a Mexican restaurant or sesame chicken from a small Chinese place. These are given at cost or with a discount for us. The meal is supplemented with milk, fruits, and veggies by local growers when possible and extends public dollars with private support. Kids get excited about the food, and then they're willing to try new things. The funding for the Summer Food Service Program allows us to jumpstart conversations and provide nutritional meals. We have also learned maybe how to fail forward as we try new things that may or may not work for some kids. Because each day, it could be a new audience. And we do our best to tailor the program for our audience or for the participants who are there. For example, I got brave last summer and tried to serve dates with one of the meals. One of the kids, early in line, declared the similarity between dates and cockroaches and started to dare the other kids to eat it. And I don't know you or your experience with kids, but most times, they don't encourage their friends to eat their fruits and veggies. So it was kind of a fun experience there. But thanks to the vital programming and funding of the Summer Food Service Program, we were able to serve these 2,500 meals last summer and are on track to serve even more this year. And that's acknowledging we're only a week and a half in the summer to the program. This creates a ripple effect of good across our community and boosting the economy as well as making sure kids are well-fed and then able to utilize resources when they need them. Because you can't use a resource if you don't know about it. But thank you for your support of this program and for your time today. Many thanks.
All right. Do we have time for questions for our program operators?
Looks like Betty has something to say.
I do, and it's not a question. Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank you for this presentation because many times, we sit here on the board and we vote on various things and not necessarily know all of the good or all of the people that it reaches. So it's through presentations like this that you get an opportunity to give us more of an insight of the good that can be done. So I just want to thank you all for the time you put in for this presentation. Thank you for the lunch. And you're doing great things. I appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Melanie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to start by saying thank you to, is it Auburn Washburn for the lunch? Awesome, thank you so much. I definitely heard some people saying, "I'm so hungry," as we headed to break. And it's a good reminder that sometimes kids are also so hungry, and that makes them cranky, and especially in the hot summer months. I think that's a big deal. I loved hearing about adding the fresh fruits and vegetables to some of those yummy hot lunches that sound good, but you're getting a little bit of both. And it was certainly nice to have the cold broccoli and the carrots and the tomatoes to go alongside something that's, you know, maybe a little less healthy if you've got some cheese and things in there. But the healthy foods, I think, is just such a big component of this. When I think about families that are food insecure, and somebody touched on it, it's not that there's no food in the house. It's that the food that's around is, it's in a box. It's probably not in the fridge. It's not fresh. It's not as healthy. And it's going to have all kinds of preservatives and, you know, types of fats in it that I might not want my kids to eat. And so, you know, those things that we work really hard to say we don't, we're creating healthier opportunities for families, having those fresh fruits and vegetables is a big deal. I wanted to ask if you could go into just a little bit more detail about the partnerships with local growers? Because I think that's a big deal for Kansas farmers. And I have heard concerns about some of those farms that, you know, really rely, frankly, on school districts as partners and customers, essentially. Can you say a little bit more about that?
I would love to say a little bit more about that. Thank you very much. The Summer Food Service Program is perfectly situated to help support local economies. At many of our Summer Food Service Program sites, they serve smaller number, or smaller number of meals than what they do during the school year. So it's easier for them to source from local producers. Because as you can imagine, if you're serving, you know, 10,000 meals in a day in your district, that's a little bit more challenging to source locally because it takes producers time to, right? You don't just go plant a seed and you have food in 45 days, right? I mean, there's some things, you know, you could get lettuce, but you know what I mean. And so the Summer Food Service Program really helps our local producers, and it helps our program operators incorporate local foods into the menus.
That's great. Beryl?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you again for the lunch. That was delicious, Washburn, Auburn Washburn. I don't know who decided to put all those great things in a burrito, but I really enjoyed it. But I really appreciate each presentation highlighting how food brings a community together. And I was thinking about parents who work and who, during the school year, trust that their child will be at school, be well-fed in the summer months. Communities are providing compassionate care for our children. And I agree with Betty that it's so critical that if we have opportunity, we make sure that message really gets out to families who may not be aware. And the school sites aren't the only sites. And so I just want to say thank you again. Thank you just for doing what you do to make sure all of our children are well-cared for and even have an opportunity to connect with the village that should be supporting them. So thanks so much.
Thank you. Yes, we have some amazing program operators across the state of Kansas.
Debbie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for the lunch as well. I did want to say that I'm probably an odd one in this group in that I practically think that lunches like this should be provided for free for all kids when they're in school. That's just me. Just because if I'm taking care of a kid, I'm sorry, I feed them. And when you talk about food insecurity, I can tell you the child who doesn't have the parents who are giving them even their free reduced lunch money to go to school are in a very awkward position when they're not sure if they're going to... They learn that the lunch person will give them lunch anyway, but it's still very stressful. I know that from personal experience. But I will push back on this. I know you mentioned specifically radio, TV, and the marquees are not enough. And I have actually been studying about marquee advertising. It's actually quite highly effective to a community because it's reaching all the passer-bys. It's actually probably for children, much more visual, and they're going to see it driving past it much more than they're probably going to hear it on the radio, because the kids aren't listening to that. And I also wanted to push back on this a little bit, but I read Title VII, Title B, Chapter 11, Subchapter A, Part 225. And obviously, the required, the position of this board is that the radio was not a most effective use of the money. And so with that, it might be very well-done to find some metrics of the marquees. How much does that affect? Because I can look myself, but it'd be much more effective coming from you if you could say the metrics support this, because the metrics are referenced in that section. And that would be a helpful tool for this board to have to report.
Thank you, Debbie. Yes, absolutely. We do have some communities, they are very fortunate to have school marquees, for sure, or marquees at a bank or someplace, so yes.
Yeah, some of those older buildings do not, do they?
That's right.
And you can always ask churches and communities.
Okay, I think we're pretty good for now. Thank you again, all of you. And for those who zoomed in, I know that's a long drive from Larned and Garden City. I'm well aware, so thank you. Yes, Danny, go ahead.
Where's the cookies?
We need the sheriff's department with the, whoever it was that did the ice cream.
Well, cookies are considered a grain-based dessert. So every single one of our child nutrition programs has different meal pattern requirements. And for the Summer Food Service Program for lunch, the meal pattern requirements are 1 ounce equivalent of grain, 2 ounce equivalents of meat-meat alternates, 3-fourths cut fruits and vegetables from two different sources, and 8 ounces of milk. So anyway, yes, absolutely, cookies are fantastic, but they're not creditable in all of our child nutrition programs.
Thank you. Appreciate you so much. Thank you. Oh, okay. Oh, true story. Okay, yes. Okay, we are going to, Dennis, I know they're probably kind of leaving, but maybe, do you want to shout something out there?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. I really love the idea of good food, nutritious food made. And maybe, maybe in your, sorry, I'm just kind of belated here. But, you know, in the small communities or where you have good community contacts with local growers and stuff, there may be vacant lots and stuff that community gardens can be started. I think that would be kind of a spin-off of this. And I'm excited about that kind of stuff.
Sorry, if I'm breaking protocol. Absolutely, yes. We are currently administering two Farm-to-Plate grants. And the Farm-to-Plate grants are available for all of our child nutrition programs, including Summer Food Service Program. And many of our grantees operate all three programs or operate the Summer Food Service Program and the Child and Adult Care Food Program.
I'm sort of getting the connection between egg in the classroom and, you know, how that can continue into the summer. So, which is our growing season.
It is, absolutely. So Summer Food Service Program is perfect for that. So yes, we would love to share more information about, specifically about local foods.
Yeah, we're going to keep talking about that. Absolutely. Thank you, Kelly and everybody. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to make another pivot, so to speak, board. We're going to go to committee reports before we go to the executive session. So work with me here. So we're going to, do we want to start? I think we'll start with Michelle with the School for the Deaf and something we're going to be moving forward in that. Got some information coming to us. Thank you. So this is a quick effort on this board's part to respond very quickly to the continued need. So Michelle, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Hopkin. Just wanted to remind everybody that I am the liaison for the School for the Deaf. Also serve on the bargaining committee with our Board Attorney Mark Ferguson for teacher contracts and that. But we have had some meetings with parents and met with administration as well. And we're still coming up with, you know, not, I don't know if it's communication, but we just want to make sure that we're responding to the parents at the School for the Deaf. So I want to read something here that we're proposing. We'd like to propose Task Force on School Improvement, Kansas State School for the Deaf, Improvement in Kansas School for the Deaf Student Success Outcomes. The background is this Task Force on School Improvement is being established to identify actionable opportunities that contribute to improved student success outcomes at the Kansas School for the Deaf. The membership of this task force would like to include committee membership would be comprised of three Kansas State Board of Education members, three Kansas School for the Deaf parent representatives, three Kansas School for the Deaf administrative staff, one liaison from the Department of Education who shall serve as the chair of this task force, Dr. Kylie Stewart, who shall serve as an ex-officio member and lend expertise to recommendations of the task force. Meeting schedule, the task force shall meet every two weeks starting the week of June 23, 2025. An agenda will be published in advance to all task force members at least 24 hours in advance of any meeting. We'd like to probably give a little more time because we'll have to have interpreters set up for that. Minutes will be taken and distributed to all members of the task force and of the State Board of Education after each meeting. All meetings are open to the public. Accountability, the task force will conclude any work on or before December 1, 2025. The task force should identify actionable items that the Kansas State School for the Deaf will implement as early as the fall semester of 2025, with full implementation of recommendations no later than the fall semester of 2026. A final report will be given to the State Board of Education at its regular meeting in December 2025.
So in this coming together, those three board members, I am asking Melanie and Beryl if they could serve on this. Melanie brings the expertise of also working with the School for the Blind previously, so she's got a lot there. And Beryl, I had asked, honestly, it's for location as much as anything and her educational background. So part of this is because it will be quick, and there'll be a lot going on. And then it's the location as far as the need to be able to be quick-responsive. So being able to get there easily.
And we'll try to be accommodating as far as like time. Most, maybe it would be after like working hours or after 4:30 or 4 o'clock. And then also at the School for the Deaf.
Yeah.
Locations.
Madam Chair, will it be available, be a Zoom? Probably, I don't think so. I don't think so. It would be in-person meetings with, open to the public. So it will be an open meeting for anybody.
Well, I'll want to participate in it, so.
You may attend, absolutely.
Right, so, all right.
Okay, okay. So overall, I guess, I don't know that we need to take a vote, but I just want to make sure we're all on point. We're in, have any discussion we want to have in this process? Yes, Betty?
I had just a quick question, if I may, because it's good to see this put together. The concern, we've had parents to come in and speak, and it's been limited with them being able to address their concern. Would that be confined then where they're able to go and share those concerns? And then you would report back to the board instead of them having to come on our...
Only open citizens?
Yeah, yeah, on the open citizens.
We'll always have Michelle to be able to constantly be...
Well, I just kind of wonder because they come. That may really be a better venue for them to share their concerns. And then you could report back to the board, I think would be...
Well, I mean, we'll have the task force working. Again, open meeting, so there's always that ability to probably hook into the task force. But, you know, we've got parent representatives, we've got staff, we've got the board. So it'll work itself through.
Chair.
Yes, sir. Yes, absolutely.
I think, Ms. Arnold, are you asking, are you talking about the open forum? Is that what you're talking about? Meaning the citizens' open forum, is that what you... Is that what you were speaking of? I think she was asking, would that alleviate? And my answer on behalf of the board would be, that would always be a parent or any citizen's choice to come. And they may be alleviated by knowing this, but we wouldn't limit the citizens.
No, 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 I wasn't talking about depriving them of that opportunity. I was just saying that it would be another outlet, which may...
Certainly another outlet.
Yeah, that's all I was saying.
Gotcha. Debbie?
Madam Chair, I would like to be on this committee. I've been making quite an effort, and I think that you might ask the parents to get to know them, to sit with them, to visit with them. And so I'm not really wanting to be excluded from this committee.
I'm not excluding you, but we have had our conversations in bringing together the board members with the reasoning I've given who are going to be on the committee. So again, you are open, welcome to attend.
We have been doing the Zoom in those meetings. I mean, with the parent meeting with the, that they've been doing that we went to, they did another, they did a Zoom. They did a Zoom for those that their kids attend the School for the Deaf.
Oh, but they're out there.
Mm-hmm. So there is, they do have the capability to do that.
I think that's something probably as a task force, she'll probably have to work through.
They could just, but this would be at least that we wouldn't have to interpret in case there's English, it would have to be, they'd just be watching. They would be watching that. It wouldn't be like, I don't think there would be like back and forth on that.
I mean, honestly, I think as you guys meet, those are some of those things to work through.
Yes.
So Michelle will kind of leave that, since you're the liaison, to kind of work through all of those things. So if that's available, I'm sure that's extremely helpful for the open meeting part for the parents like you're talking about. Okay, okay. And next, for committee reports, I mean, everybody will have an opportunity, but I do know policy is going to, as Melanie pointed out before we left yesterday. Go ahead, Melanie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, you all have in your packet and hopefully had time to look at the just couple of lines of text that have been proposed as an addition to board policy. a couple of lines of text that have been proposed as an addition to board policy regarding essentially a point of order or a potential violation of the minutes. And so, I think this is an opportunity to have a conversation if there are any questions. And typically, this would be considered a receive item at this time with the option to then vote next month. But sometimes we get in a hurry. So, I'll just begin there and, and ask are there any questions or discussion items from the group?
Hopefully, everybody had time yesterday, last evening, overnight, to look at this and see what their thoughts are, if this clarifies things well enough. Betty?
And actually, Madam Chair, I'd like to, to wait until after if there's any discussion to be called on.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'll just emphasize real quick. I think it's important that we have this in writing for the reasons I pointed out yesterday, which is that because we're using what is a modified version kind of of Robert's Rules, by putting this in writing and including it in the policy book, it is clear for all of the board members exactly how this process happens. And I think it answers a lot of the questions that have come up in recent meetings. And I like that it's just really lightweight and we haven't stricken anything from existing board policy. It's just some additional lines for clarification.
Right, I agree.
And Madam Chair, I will have a point of order on the committee. You do, per our policy committees, 1008, the board does need to vote on that. It is a temporary committee that you're forming with no more than five members.
Are we, okay, you've lost me.
I know.
Where are you at?
We're just this last item of business that we're.
The Task Force?
Yeah, because the Task Force, that you've, you've made a temporary committee, and it kind of took me off guard because I thought it was going to be an open committee from my conversations that I have had with the liaison with the parents. And so, in order to have a temporary committee made, it needs to have a time period, the 1008 mark. And it just needs, it says, "Any temporary committee of the State Board shall be created by vote of the State Board and shall not include more than five board members." So, you've apparently made a committee. I thought we were going to be acting more as their local school board, because that's what we are, is their local school board. And so that we would have to have at least a certain number of, of members involved. But it would not be limiting, like you can be at these Task Force meetings but have no voice, but you're even on their local school board. So, this is either a temporary committee that we need to vote to form, or we need to say that we are their local school board. And you can't say, well, some local school boards can represent them and not others. You, that's not.
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay, you said that you appointed committee members.
I appointed Task Force members.
Task Force members, that's a, that's a committee. Okay.
That's fine.
So, we have a temporary committee. It needs to be voted on. And, and it's a temporary committee. It, because, what it does is it excludes those of us who are on their local school board who want to be involved from being involved at the level I would like to be involved at.
Yes, Mark?
So, you know, when we have disputes, you always find that, that the language is important, but it sometimes can be ambiguous. Any temporary committee of the State Board typically would be like a temporary committee of just the State Board. This is kind of called a Task Force, I mean, which is typically, when a Task Force has been appointed by the commissioner, designated by the commissioner, or a Task Force by the Attorney General, and one of, one of the persons from the board is appointed, it's a little differently, different because a temporary committee might be for a specific, limited purpose of a subset of the board. So, it is slightly different because a Task Force is typically, you know, a broader, a broader group. So, technically, I don't think that, that 1008-1 applies. I would say that in that kind of situation, it's at the discretion of the board, Chair, the leadership. If after hearing your concerns, she wants to put that to a vote, that's fine. She was already, we've already kind of discussed your rationale. So, and, and I guess to, to end where you started is that you made a point of order, and that was the whole point of the initial, the, the main topic on the floor was really the, the policy issue. And, and dispensing with the language of point of order, which this board does, is, is a little bit foreign to this board. So, I'd be happy to discuss further, but those were just my initial thoughts.
Thank you, because I'll point out 1009 only gives you the power to appoint a temporary committee. So, that is what you have the power to appoint. And in the paperwork for the Task Force on the School Improvement says a membership of the committee will be comprised of. So, it actually calls itself a committee in its own description. I'm only asking to be involved. So, I, I don't understand, again, the selective interpretation of policy to try to exclude me from this committee. I think that's a little bit.
Debbie, I think it's, I think it's, honestly, it's sad to me that when something happens, you take that as exclusion. I had very, I had very real reasons in the people that I chose. As I had conversations with Michelle, with the commissioner, and with the attorney, as we talked over the situation, I knew it would probably have to be fast-paced because we have to move things along. So, knowing if there's people close by in physical location, and knowing Melanie's background with the School for the Blind, she has a real experience model in that. This is a fast-paced Task Force, that is all I was doing. It was not an attempt to sit back and say, there are people who are not allowed to be on this. That is not what this was about. So, I'm sorry, you're taking it that way, but that is not.
What I'm just saying is it's a committee. And so, as.
We are, I am happy, I am happy to put it to a vote.
I made a point of order.
That's fine. That's fine. I was pointing to your verbiage, please.
Then I will appeal to the board. And if I have a second, then we will let the board decide if this is a committee, I suppose.
We will decide if the.
Madam Chair. No. Madam Chair, if, if I could interject, because I did serve, have extensive time on the Policy Committee, it gives you the authority, whether it's to appoint. And that's exactly what we went through when, when things were changed around. It gives you as the Chair the authority to appoint, so.
So, the question is, as a Task Force, are we creating a committee that needs to be voted on? So, that is the point. So, that is the motion on the table. Whether or not we need to vote, I'm sorry? Yes, I need a second. So, do we want a second on placing this into a, a motion for a committee? I guess is what I would say.
So, Madam Chair, if they're on the committee, like the three that you mentioned, me as the liaison for the School for the Deaf, and then the other two that you mentioned, other board members, if they're at the, at the meeting, they're not allowed to participate then? They're not, like if she were to, it's an open meeting. So, you're, you're saying the people that are there, it's an open meeting, can only listen, they can't participate?
Generally, that is true. The Task Force would be meeting and speaking. That does not mean as a board member, you can't speak with the people on the Task Force at any time, obviously. Any of us can. So.
And anything we bring back has to be voted on anyway. Anything we, any changes, anything we do.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
We can't move forward with anything until.
Right, because the sub.
That's why we're bringing recommendations. Is that not what that says? Minutes, there's going to be minutes taken and everything like that.
Right, yeah. With any recommendations coming to the full board. Correct. Yes, Dennis? I don't know if I can, but I will try. I think in this moment, what we are looking for is, is, are we classifying the Task Force as a committee? Which, per policy, if it's a committee, we need to take a vote. If we've created a committee, a subcommittee of the board. For, Mark's interpretation is that because it is not just board members, it does not qualify as a subcommittee. It is a Task Force because it involves other people outside of the board. And so, that's what is the appeal here, is that, that tension between what have we actually brought together?
And from, and I guess, again, perception is what, what's significant. But when you have a Task Force, this may be more of semantics, the Task Force is made up of, of members, and that's probably why it was called committee. I, are you asking us, should this be a Task Force or should this be a committee? And I thought it was already decided. It was a Task Force.
Correct. Okay, but that is the appeal. If it is a, considered a committee per policy, we need to vote on it. So, I am asking.
It says committee membership.
Madam Chair, if I could just inject, the blue ribbon Task Force on screen time was 30-some people, a cup, two of our members. They were in session for three or four months, and we didn't have this discussion. So, I'm going to second the motion now, so we can go to a vote.
Okay, so the vote will be, do you agree that this is a committee, which is a subcommittee of the board and requires a vote? Is that understood? Okay. So, those that believe this is a committee, therefore creating in policy the need for a vote, do you agree with that? All those in favor? Okay. All those opposed? So, we have, and we are missing a member because Jim is gone. So, so 1, 7, and 1, is that what we're doing? Because Michelle's present, not voting? Okay. Okay, the motion fails. This is a Task Force. It has been laid out. It will commence. And Michelle, and again, it is an open meeting. So, anybody allowed, if you have a time and you're in the neighborhood and you want to be there, that is completely fine. Okay? Of anybody in the public as well as this board.
And I did get a text that, that KSD does provide Zoom. If it's an open meeting like that, they will provide Zoom interpreter.
Great, okay. So, we'll need to make sure that link is probably put out there to some effect for the public, if we're going to do that. Okay, great. Okay, sir.
You were, before we took that pivot diversion, you were considering.
Yes, we were. So.
Board member tosses presentation to the board.
Okay, so we want to come back and have a discussion. Is there any concerns, any changes, any revision, anything about what has been presented by the Policy Committee to give better clarity to an appeal?
Madam Chair, we did just practice everything that is in the written document.
I think we did well, too.
So, I think this is, pruned itself out to be very helpful. And thank you, Policy Committee. I, I think you hammered it out well. Yes, Betty?
And, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules, just given that we're not actually changing policy. We're just defining and cleaning up, that we suspend the rules and go ahead and take a vote on this today.
Okay, so a motion has been made to suspend the rules. Do I have a second? Dennis, second set? All in favor of suspending the rules? Eight, all opposed? And present not voting? We're missing somebody? Oh, okay. Nope, because I wasn't getting to nine. So, Debbie is present, not voting. Great. So, that has passed. And so, we will vote to place what has been handed to us into policy. The red, I will specify, the red will be placed into policy. The blue was just a footnote. So, the red wording will be added into policy going forward. All in favor? Wait a minute, I need a motion. Thank you, Deborah. I am making that motion. I guess we'll just say that's I did that. Thank you. In a second. Betty's going to make a second. All in favor? And that would be a 9-0, and it passes. So, thank you again, Policy Committee. We will get that added into an amendment, I guess, to the policy manual. Okay, any other policy, any other committee reports at this time? If you have had a, one of your committees that you're on has met and you would please report out, that would be great. Okay, I did attend the Accreditation Advisory Council, which is KISA related, of course, because I'm a little bit of a addict about KISA, I guess. So, it went really, really well. And they're just continuing the implementation of the continuation. So, we've been through year one, that has to continue to work out. And so, there's more conversation about what year two, specifically about the School Improvement Day will look like, and how the action plans will move forward and the different processes. So, there's some really good discussion. We met in Andover in, in person. They generally meet on Zoom most of the time. So, this was one of their in-person. So, it was, it was just a really powerful day of hearing from, I always loved hearing from the educators as they come together to discuss all the points. So, it was really good. And they're, like I said, they'll be bringing those things before us, but walking out how in those, as school improvement days, then the districts that come together will be reporting out their action plans and how they played that through. And then they will be evaluated to some extent. People will be trained to be able to evaluate how that worked and just give that feedback so that they're constantly working that out together. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
It's not a committee report, but I did attend a conference last week with NASB on early childhood. And I have so many notes. And because it's not a committee, I will bundle them and send them for the Friday note inclusion.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd forgotten you'd gone to that. So, that was good, huh? Okay, wonderful. Dennis?
The ESEA Committee is trying to kind of come back after being dormant for a couple of years, I understand. So, but a Zoom meeting was canceled last week just because they're, I think it's summertime and people aren't thinking, you know, about starting something up new. So, they're going to try to reboot that in, what, was it in August? Yeah, August sometime. So, I, Melanie, are we both, or, yeah?
Dennis and I are both on that. Yep. I will add too, since we're, if we want to do some quick calendar updates, SEAC will meet in two weeks on a Tuesday as the precursor to the leadership, the KSDE Leadership Meeting, which is in Wichita. So, I'll have a report next time for that.
Wonderful, thank you. Moving into, I guess, the Chair Report as is on the thing. We are looking at, and so I need your feedback. Dennis had brought forward, and we have heard about it before, the poverty, what is the second word? Is it the paradigm? Paradigm, I did have it right. So, the poverty paradigm, it's a, I don't know, help me out, somebody. Dennis, you've been through it. What is it?
Yeah, it's a, it's a half-day simulation.
That's right.
Participation type of experience. And I was kind of, you know, like, oh, this is kind of quirky. When I first, you know, was told about it, I thought, well, this is maybe for, you know, people that don't have anything else to do. But, but actually going to ESDAC in Hutch, it's, it's just, it's just a good participation type of experience to understand the roadblocks, whatever, that if, if you're in, if you're in true, you know, poverty is, I think, relative to, I mean, we're a very wealthy country compared to the rest, a lot of, a lot of the parts of the world. But how we view classification, you know, poverty classification is, is sort of played out. And I, and I think it's helpful, it was helpful for me to understand. And I consider myself conservative, you know, people should do everything they can to help themselves. But there, there is a percentage of our population that are really, you might say, just always strapped. I can't think of a, you know, another word for it. And, and, and so they struggle. And so, it involves kind of understanding, you know, walking out a, a lifestyle that they live that I don't understand. I mean, I, you know. So, it was an eye-opener in that sense. And it makes me realize that, you know, some of the things we do are really important and affect, you know, significant number of families and children. So, I, I would just encourage you, if we're, if we're planning that, that we, that we set that aside.
And that's the thing, we need to get an idea. So, we were looking at doing this for, be the, be like noon on for like, what, three hours? I think it is two and a half to three hours, next board meeting on our Wednesday. I think it is two and a half to three hours, next board meeting on our Wednesday. But we need to know everybody would participate because it takes people to really make it work. And, and I know they would bring some people and we would get some educators, I think, some people, whoever, I don't know. But we really need the board to be all in. It's really important, and I think it, I think it would be, I mean, I haven't done it, but I, we, we can hear about something, but until we have some way of experiencing it to some level, then it truly can impact us, so.
If, can I add something? And I'm going to lean on Dr. Watson a little bit. The woman that leads it is from McPherson, or that's where she was. And Dr. Watson, you can probably describe this better than I can, but she came out of a really.
Strong situation.
Tough situation, and she, she does a great job in.
So, yes, she is a parent of children in McPherson Public Schools and, and, and has experienced a lot in life. And she, she can describe that, I think, and she will talk about that, I think, a little bit in the simulation. Very proud of her, and she, I'll smile when I say this, she's, she's a dear friend, but she would tell you, and I would echo, we were not dear friends for most of her early life as a parent because of a variety of situations that, that, that she was in. But anyway, yeah, she's, she's good at what she does.
There, I was going to state to the point, she knows what she's talking about in the midst of this. So again, I'm looking for, is that something, or is it the wrong month and we need to find a different month? Melanie?
So during board travel, I was going to bring up that the Education Commission of the States meeting is in July, and I may miss the Wednesday day of the board meeting.
Okay. So we know that you would be out. We don't have Jim here, so I'm not really sure. No, you know what? No, that wouldn't be that week. Okay. So as far as I know.
Can I just ask if maybe it would be a Monday retreat afternoon? I mean, if we're still working on schedule.
Yeah. But I, I'm really looking for, is everybody, will everybody? Commit, thank you. I'm like, where's my work? Commit to, if, find a day to make that work. So if state does not work for July, would you be willing to come in Monday afternoon and we can work on it for that day? So that would be the, I don't know, eighth or something? Seventh? Okay. Everybody good? Connie, would that work for you? So the day before the board meeting starts. Take an afternoon.
As far as I know.
As far as you know. Okay. The cows could get out. Okay. Please let me or Dr. Watson know very soon if that's an absolute not. But let's move toward that. So we'll lean into the Monday afternoon, the day before the board meeting, and we'll walk through that. And I mean, I think it will be really good for us, so thank you. I appreciate that. The other thing I want to ask is, when Beth Foltz was before us, I don't think it was this last time, well, I think she reiterated it last time, the Assessment Advisory Council, we don't have, that has not been a board committee. I personally think it's a big deal, and so it was just like this aha moment for me, like, should we have a board liaison on that council? And if so, you know, let me know if you're interested, because I personally think that that one's, that would be a big deal. So I want to throw that out there and say, if you're interested, let me know. I think that's a committee, a council, that a liaison would be really helpful to, to jump into that and help the board, just, you know, be hearing all the time. Because assessments are one of our biggies, so. The other thing I wanted to ask on the pre-K concerns that we have heard at this board table, I just want to reiterate what I said last month. There are things that we can do. We can look into and we can navigate, we have some parameters in that as a board, as an agency, but it is going to take somebody stepping in, getting with staff, working that out, understanding the process. So I'm just going to throw it out there one more time. If that is a real concern and you want to step into that and look at all of that, this is your opportunity, so let's, let's do that. So again, let me know, because that has to start. That, that is a lengthy process, and we have to look at what, if there's things we can change, what can we change and bring that back to the board? So if you want that conversation, I'm asking you to step into that. Okay. Oh, sorry, I really did have a couple of things. I will just let you guys know, as Chair, and I've told our previous Chair, where was my list? Here's what's going to happen when you take the chair seat and all the things you'll be invited to. So the National Teacher Hall of Fame, which is in Emporia, Kansas, which is pretty awesome in reality, they do invite the State Board of Education Chair to bring greetings to the banquet they have for the inductees. So I'm just going to let you know, I will be doing that June 20th. I'm starting my speech as it is, not a speech, it's a greeting. But I, I told Dr. Watson, he's like, there's no Kansans being inducted. I said, I know. He's like, I said, you're excused if you don't want to be there. And then a wedding came up and his family, so he's like, I really won't be there. It's kind of funny. Anyways.
I would add to that, if you've never been to Emporia, it's obviously the original teacher college of Kansas.
Right.
You know, it's not that anymore, but I mean, that's why, that's how it started. The National Teacher Hall of Fame, it's also the National Memorial for Fallen Educators.
Yes.
Which is housed at Emporia. So anyone who, who has passed away because of school violence. Anywhere in the country is honored at Emporia.
And they do a.
And they do a ceremony with the National Teacher Hall of Fame members every year.
Yeah. So I continue to learn. And then we do have a State Hall of Fame, so I'm, I've decided I'm going to have to figure out where those people are. I just want to make sure everybody saw, I will not be able to attend, but the Lawrence Gardner graduation that was in the Friday notes, because I cannot be there. This is for the, where is it at? I just lost the words. Yeah, it's that graduation, but it's the. Yes, the juvenile, right? Detention center graduation. So obviously, it's here, so if anybody can attend that on behalf of the board, that would be great. Okay, I think I will stop talking now, and we, well, I won't stop talking, but we'll keep moving. Board travel requests. So hopefully you had a chance to zip through those. It is an action item, so we do need to vote.
So I do need to add that ECS trip, which is July, whoops, I just had it. It's that Wednesday, July 9th through 11th.
Okay. So anybody else? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Apologize.
That's okay.
I could plan to attend the KSD conference in Wichita. I just have to go upstairs and make my arrangements, so I think that's the end of the month.
The KSDE conference? Yeah. Debbie's already got you, or Deborah already has you registered.
We just have to let, we just have to let Pat know, but you're covered.
Yeah. Yeah. Deborah, do you have next two, next Monday with Mark and I at the School for the Deaf? Yep. Our meeting. Okay. Anybody want to put out a motion? Anybody?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve travel as amended.
Second? Betty? All in favor? Nine, zero, passes. Now, board meeting dates. Hopefully you took a look at that. I don't think there's anything different going forward. Correct. Second Tuesday, but the following day. For 2026. Yes?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the recommended dates for board meetings.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
For twenty-six, twenty-seven. Anything else?
All right, we'll do it.
Thank you.
Okay. Second? Melanie, seconds? All in favor? Yes. I'm sorry.
Just, just wondering if, are there any planned retreats in the fall? Do you, do you know, I mean, are you thinking that could happen? I mean, or even next spring? I know.
The only thing that might come up would be the board goals, where like Melanie had made that comment about possibly having a retreat kind of around a particular subject. So that, we're always open to that idea, but nothing major.
It doesn't necessarily have to be on the schedule, is what you're saying?
Correct. This is meeting dates.
All right.
Yeah, these are official because of a lot of other entities look at our dates before they make their date, so we like to have ours out there.
Sure, okay.
Good to go? Okay. All in favor? Eight opposed. Present not voting. Okay. Maybe done? Okay. You know, that's probably what I do. Do we have, we're just going to finish this up before we go into executive session. So do we have future agenda requests? Yes?
Yes, I wrote it down. I request in writing that the board have a discussion to review the 7 May 2025 USDE letter regarding ESEA Section 8532 Unsafe School Choice Option and discuss the current definition of persistently dangerous schools on the KSDE website. And then I would request that the agenda the following month allow us to determine if the board should redefine the Kansas definition of persistently dangerous schools.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else? Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure how long this would take. It might not even need to be on the agenda, but just discussing, like, the breakdown of educators. You know how you talked about teacher, educator, the difference, like instructional in a classroom? And then just, you know, how many are we talking about, you know, like as far as, how many are considered educators in a school as opposed to classroom instruction licensed teachers? Because you talked about educators, that, I was like, I mean, are we talking to janitor? Is a janitor an educator? I mean, it just, so.
I think they're licensed.
I mean, I think people hear that and they're like, and then they listed all these people that are considered educators, and then I was like, okay, so.
It is, it's definitely a licensing issue educator-wise, whereas a teacher is a classroom.
Instruction, where the instructions take in place.
Teacher would be any early childhood kindergarten, elementary, middle school, high school teacher. A licensed person, other licensed educators, librarians, school counselors, reading specialist, administrator, anyone else that holds a license but isn't in a classroom every day.
So they could be in a.
School psychologists.
They could be in a classroom for 20 minutes while the teacher needs to go handle something else. It's, it's licensing.
Speech-language.
But they wouldn't count, would that count as timeframe, though? I mean, would that count as instructional time?
Well, that's two different things, Michelle. So instructional time is whenever kids are being instructed in a classroom. The licensed personnel report, teachers are those delivering that every day, and other, and then the other licensed personnel are educators who, who don't deliver instruction every day in a classroom, but provide services in the educational. Is that helpful?
Yep, very helpful. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. I think we are going to go to, on the, we're going to back, back up to the federal issues, which we continue down the path of pertaining to the ESER funds that were cut off on March 28th without time to turn in receipts and invoices. So. My brain is a little tired.
So I just bring you a couple of updates. So.
Put you on the spot.
No, I'm just trying to think in my head of the various timeframes.
I was, too, and it wasn't working.
We, approximately three weeks ago, we request on Friday, so we're in the bubble, two and a half weeks ago, we requested a meeting with Secretary McMahon to discuss the liquidation of funds that had been granted per a court order to 16 states and the District of Columbia. Last week, we heard that, that that request was denied because, I sent this to you, because it's deter, they determined that she is the appeal person and therefore could not talk to me about anything of COVID-related money. On Friday, we sent a formal appeal of the denial of the ESER funding, which we had 30 days to appeal, and as of today, at least right now, we have not heard about that appeal. Oftentimes, that comes to me on Fridays, but it doesn't, I mean, not necessarily, it doesn't have to. So we are waiting to hear that administrative decision of whether or not they will request our appeal to relinquish funds or deny that. Don't know at this, at this time.
And I think within that, we have requested a meeting with the Attorney General, and we're waiting on that.
Correct. Yes, we are. And then there, you may want to enter into executive session to talk about attorney client or anything else.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're going to, just to continue that conversation. Is it okay if I do it? You want Danny to do it? And we, let's build in a, let's build in a break before we enter a session.
Have a science of reading. Maybe start at 2:10, 2:10, just to get people time.
And it has to be written down, I think.
Okay, I'm, I move that the Kansas State Board of Education recess into executive session to discuss the subject of potential litigation, pending litigation, legal matters with legal counsel, which is justified pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relation under coma. In order to protect the privilege and the board's communications with an attorney on legal matters, the session will begin at 2:10 for.
Fifteen, 20 minutes?
Fifteen minutes. No act will be taken during this section.
Sorry. Do you think longer?
Thirty.
Let's back it to 30 minutes, okay?
Thirty.
We like this.
You can go out early. Thirty minutes, no act will be taken during this session, and the open meeting will resume in the boardroom at 2:40 PM, January 11th, 2025. And we will invite Randy Watson, Mark Ferguson, Scott Gordon, Frank Harwood are invited to join the executive session.
A second for that. I'm sorry, Betty.
Just to be clear, you did say January, it should be June.
I did say Jan, I meant June. Thank you.
I didn't want a second until we, it's June.
No, no. Thank you.
Betty, seconds? All in favor? That is a nine, zero vote. So we will take a very quick break, come back and be in executive session at 2:10.
We are back from executive session. There is no action, so we are going to adjourn until July's meeting dates are?
8th and 9th.
8th and 9th. Oh, and I do want to say it's July. We'll be just past the 4th of July. It would be really fun if we all wore something patriotic.
I've got a great-
Americana, you know, red, white and blue, that type of thing.
I have a great-
Yeah, I know.
American flag tie.
So, we are adjourned. Thank you.